Yes, thank you. I was just getting the recording started. I will do a roll call. Good morning. Let me start with Commissioner Brankard. Are you present?
Present.
Good morning. Commissioner Condalaria?
Here.
Commissioner Sirtan? Commissioner Dominguez? Commissioner McWilliams?
I'm here.
Commissioner Modi? Commissioner Patton?
Here.
Commissioner Rader?
Here.
Good morning. I'm going to call Commissioner Cypher for the record, but I do know that he's going to be absent. Commissioner Thompson?
I'm here.
Commissioner Timmons?
Morning, I'm here.
Commissioner Velazquez?
I'm here. Good morning.
Good morning. Commissioner Veehill?
Here.
Chair Stringer, excuse me.
I'm here.
Thank you. Chair Stringer, you have a quorum.
Thank you. And yeah, we'll get to the new members here shortly, but Commissioner Sirtan can be removed from our list.
Oh, of course. My apologies.
Okay, next up on the agenda is the approval of today's April 12, 2022 agenda. Do I have any discussion or motion?
Madam Chair, this is Commissioner Brankard, and I move approval.
Thank you, Commissioner Brankard. Do I have a second?
Madam Chair, I would second the motion.
Thank you, Commissioner Dominguez. Shall we have a roll call vote, please, Pam?
Commissioner Brankard?
Yes.
Commissioner Condalaria?
Yes.
Commissioner Dominguez?
Yes.
Commissioner McWilliams?
Yes.
Commissioner Modi, I don't know that she joined us yet. Commissioner Patton?
Yes.
Commissioner Rader? Okay, oh, yes, thank you. Commissioner Thompson? Commissioner Timmons?
Yes.
Thank you. Commissioner Velazquez?
Yes.
Commissioner Veehill?
Yes.
Let me loop back around. Commissioner Thompson, can you hear us?
Yes, I voted yes.
Thank you, Commissioner Thompson. Chair Stringer?
Yes.
Very good. The agenda is approved.
Okay, thank you. Moving on to the next agenda item is the approval of the March 8, 2022 meeting minutes. I know I identified one item, but I'll open up the floor for discussion from other commissioners first. Okay, so Pam, on item number three reflects an incorrect date, I believe. The section should reference the January 1, 2022 minutes and not the March 8 minutes. And so I propose to revise the minutes to correct that on lines 69 and 71.
Okay, got it.
Do I have a motion to approve the minutes?
Madam Chair, this is Commissioner Brankard. I would move the approval as amended with one additional amendment. My name is not on the list of commissioners at the top, and I'm deeply offended.
Oh, no. Okay, I'll add you. Thank you. Thank you for noticing that. It's our first test.
So I move approval of the minutes of the March 8 meeting as amended.
Thank you. Do I have a second?
Madam Chair, this is Commissioner Thompson. I second the motion.
Thank you, Commissioner Thompson. Pam, shall we have a roll call vote to approve the minutes?
Yes, ma'am, to approve the amended minutes. Commissioner Brankard?
Yes.
Thank you. Commissioner Condalaria?
Yes.
Thank you. Commissioner Dominguez?
Yes.
Commissioner McWilliams?
Yes.
Thank you. Commissioner Modi, have you joined us? Commissioner Patton?
Madam Chair, I was not present for that meeting, so I'm going to abstain.
Thank you. Commissioner Rader?
Yes.
Commissioner Thompson?
Yes.
Commissioner Timmons?
Yes.
Commissioner Velazquez?
Madam Chair, I will also abstain. I was not here for that meeting.
Commissioner Veehill, are you still with us?
Yes.
Thank you. Chair Stringer?
Yes.
Madam Chair, the motion passes with two abstentions.
Okay, thank you. All right, our next agenda item is to discuss the commission changes. So we've got a little different makeup of the commission, and I just wanted to go over that. So during our last meeting, we welcomed Bill Brankard to represent the Energy, Minerals, and Natural Resources Department, although we forgot to include him on the minutes, as he pointed out. And in addition to that, Commissioner David Sirtan with State Parks Division, representing MNRD as well, has been replaced by Toby Velazquez. And so Commissioner Velazquez, if you don't mind just sharing a little bit about your background, so the commissioners kind of have an idea of your background.
Great, thank you. Thank you, Madam Chair. Just a little bit of information on Dr. David Sirtan. He has moved on to the U.S. Fish and Wildlife, so we wish him the best in his new endeavors with our federal partners. He's been a great colleague of mine for approximately 13 years with the New Mexico State Parks Division. So we're happy for him, but we're also sad to see him leave the division. And so now you're stuck with me. I'm Toby Velazquez. I am the Division Director for the New Mexico State Parks Division, born and raised in the Moore Valley, have been living in the Coaqui Valley now for about 16 years. Been with the division 24 years, started as a seasonal in high school and college, got out of graduate school and started as a law enforcement ranger. And I'm the director here with you all today, and it's been a great career for me. I enjoy everything about our natural and cultural resources in the state of New Mexico. I continue to tell folks that I am New Mexico true, born and raised, and I'm proud of it. And I carry that wherever I go, and it's the primary mission for me is to support our state. And I'm happy and proud to be part of this great group of folks making sure that we can do what we can to maintain our natural and cultural resources. So thank you so much.
Thank you very much, Commissioner Velazquez. You've got a gorgeous picture of New Mexico behind you, so great representation.
Madam Chair, I am always highlighting state parks. That is Sugary Canyon State Park in Raton, New Mexico, Colfax County.
Okay, well, I hope we can all visit there as soon as possible. All right, the other change that we have is Can't talk. Commissioner Muscheraifa is no longer serving on the office, serving on the commission for the Office of the State Engineer Interstate Stream Commission, and no replacement has been named as of yet. So hopefully, we will get that replacement soon, and we'll have a new commissioner to welcome at the next meeting. That covers all of the changes. Any discussion on that item before we move on? Okay, moving on to public comments. So I will ask members of the public if they, if anyone has any general comments to make. Pam, do you know if anyone signed up to speak?
No, Madam Chair, no one has told me they wanted to make a general comment this morning.
Okay, well, we will then move on to the next item, which is a discussion of the Open Meetings Act, our annual resolution for the commission. And I will turn the floor over to Counsel Sanchez.
Madam Chair, thank you. Good morning, members of the commission. Madam Chair, I will give Pam a moment. I've asked her to put the discussion draft of the resolution on screen, so I'll give her a minute or so to do that. Thank you, Pam. Just simply quickly, by way of context, the Open Meetings Act, Section 1015-1D, requires every public body of which the commission is one to determine annually what constitutes reasonable notice to the public, reasonable notice of their public meetings. And this discussion draft that you're looking at is essentially the same one as was passed and adopted by the commission last year with the changes highlighted in red font. Pam, if you'll scroll up just briefly to that bottom of the first page, those, what you're seeing are those last three factual recitations are the changes from last year's OMA resolution. And those of you that have been on the commission for a while will recall that essentially the previous paragraphs were driven by working in a COVID environment. Former, the former chair had insisted that those be in there. What I've looked at recently, we had a executive order that expired April 1. We have a public health order from the Acting Secretary of DOE that expires on April the 15. And that language that you see there, those last three factual recitations, are essentially coming out of or come out of the public health order. And then the only other change is in paragraph 10. If you can scroll to that, Pam, please. Thank you. And again, the, that language is pretty much taken verbatim from the public health order that is currently in effect. And the last little caveat, if you will, at the bottom of paragraph 10 is that since the beginning of March 2020, the Office of the Attorney General has not issued any new guidance on having public meetings in a COVID environment. So that was simply to accommodate what might happen in the interim. So basically, there's a couple of choices for the commission. One is to simply strike those three factual recitations and the whole of paragraph 10. And that would be in the instance where we would foreseeably not be going back, foreseeably going back to only live meetings. But the alternative is to leave that language that I've proposed. And again, I would indicate or clarify that paragraph 10 is permissive. It's not mandatory. It simply allows the commission to hold public meetings using a virtual meeting application or platform. That's all I have. I'll welcome any questions or comments the chair or the commission members may have.
Thank you, Counsel Sanchez. Any discussion on the revisions?
Madam Chair, this is Commissioner Brankard. Am I correct, Mr. Sanchez, that the way paragraph 10 is written, that the commission can only have a virtual meeting if there is a public health emergency in effect?
That would trigger that provision, yes.
So once the public health emergency is gone, we have to have live meetings. Is that correct?
No, I think what has emerged, at least from the viewpoint of the Open Government Division at the Attorney General's Office, is the hybrid meetings, continuing, going back to live in-person meetings and having also, along with those, virtual meetings as well. This would allow the commission to do both or either.
Okay, I just, the way I read the first clause of paragraph 10, it seems to seem that the virtual meetings only apply during a public health emergency or only allow during a public health emergency.
Well, the language is, Commissioner Brankard, the second line, the commission may hold public meetings. Again, the language's permissive and not mandatory.
Okay, so it's your interpretation that even if there's not a public health emergency, the commission could have virtual meetings?
Yes, along with or separate from in-person meetings.
I guess just to build on that point, Pam, can you scroll up just a tiny little bit so I can see the beginning of nine? Okay. I kind of see Commissioner Brankard's point that the clause at the beginning of 10 seemingly does limit it to a public health emergency. Perhaps if we just added, or at the direction of the commission, the commission may hold public meetings using virtual platform right after the red text in there? To address your issue, Commissioner Brankard?
I would be fine with that language.
As would I.
Any further discussion or motion?
Madam Chair?
Yes, Commissioner Dominguez.
I had a little bit of the same concern or confusion that Commissioner Brankard had. And I guess my question for counsel was along the lines of, originally, when we transitioned to completely virtual during the pandemic, it was based on the fact that the public health order prohibited mass gatherings. As I understand, the public health order now, that portion of it has been lifted, even though there's still a public health order. So the reference to the public health order gets a little bit confusing. Because as I had read it, it kind of limited the commission's ability. And that had, that had raised the question for me of how this meshes with the Water Quality Act, specifically 746-6, which specifies that hearings on regulations for water quality standards or statewide application shall be held in Santa Fe. So my question for counsel was, if the public health order has done away with the exclusion of mass gatherings, how do we make our Open Meetings Act resolution mesh with the Water Quality Act so that we're actually not in violation of the water quality?
Commissioner Dominguez, thank you for your question. Just to clarify, the governor's executive order expired April 1. The only order in effect is the one that was issued on March 18 by the Acting Health, the Secretary of Public Health. The language, and I would point you to, and the remainder of the commission, to that public health order, it's in your packet. And specifically, the language in the second to the last of the new or proposed factual recitations, that language comes directly out of the public health order. And even though there isn't a prohibition on in-person gatherings, there is still an affirmation of social distancing and proper use of face coverings in public spaces. So that is, that is still in effect. And I would point out that that public health order expires under paragraph four. At page four of the order, it says that the order shall remain in effect immediately and remain in effect through April 14, I'm sorry, April 15. With respect to the requirement of meeting in Santa Fe, what we've done, Commissioner Dominguez, is the specific orders that pertain to either rulemaking hearings or adjudicatory hearings have specified that the meeting will be heard virtually, and that isn't a problem with respect to the Open Meetings Act.
Counsel Sanchez, is it a problem with respect to the Water Quality Act and the reference to being held in Santa Fe?
It hasn't been. We've been, since March of 2020, all our adjudic, all our orders setting or scheduling either rulemaking hearings or adjudicatory hearings have provided for the meeting to be held virtually. That isn't, I had not seen that as an issue. It certainly hasn't been one that has been raised by anyone, including the commission.
Madam Chair, to follow up on your question, I understand what Commission Counsel is indicating of what had occurred during the pandemic. But that was given the situation of the pandemic and along with the guidance that the Attorney General's Office had provided linked to the pandemic situation. But we seem to be moving out of that scenario. And I'm just, I'm concerned with the fact of what the Water Quality Act states, which has nothing in there indicating just holding it virtually covers the premise of the Water Quality Act itself.
Madam Chair, may I respond to that, please?
Yes, Counsel Sanchez.
As I said initially, there's really two alternatives. The language that you, that I substituted in those last three factual recitations and the language in paragraph 10 were driven by the former chair, Jennifer Pruitt. And again, that was to respond to meeting in a COVID-19 environment. What we can simply do is that, is the first alternative that I suggested is to strike those COVID-specific factual recitations, strike paragraph 10, and then Commissioner Dominguez's concern will be addressed, as will any possible confusion or potential limitation on having virtual meetings.
Thank you, Counsel Sanchez. You know, I think while we are seeing improvements with the pandemic, I, we don't know if the public health order will be extended past April 15. But it does still advise that social distancing and limiting the exposure is the best practice to keep people safe while not mandatory. And so I think, and given the other trends that we're seeing outside of New Mexico that might be seen here after the fact, of course, none of us can predict that. But I think the option to hold virtual meetings is still relevant. And so right now, I think we have two amendments on the table. One to add at the direction of the commission and two, paragraph 10. Or Counsel Sanchez, if I interpreted what you just said correctly, you're proposing that we could strike the red language and just leave it as the commission may hold public meetings using virtual applications, which include Santa Fe. So I feel like that's not a huge concern or a huge conflict with the Water Quality Act because those who are in Santa Fe can still participate, and it's more broad. I don't know, that might be too loose of an interpretation. But that's sort of just my comment on the discussion. And I, I see either of those two options as viable options to move forward with this resolution. And I don't believe we actually have a motion on the table yet. We just had the discussion to add the clause or to strike it. Further discussion or a motion? Mr. Brankard?
If there's no further discussion, I would make a motion. Hearing none, I move that we adopt the proposed 2022 Open Meetings Resolution as proposed by the New Mexico Attorney General's Office with the amendment proposed by Chair Stringer.
Do I have a second? Commissioner Timmons, I'll second. Sorry, I couldn't find my unmute. Thank you, Commissioner Timmons. Pam, shall we have a roll call vote to adopt the annual resolution as amended?
Okay, Commissioner Brankard?
Yes.
Commissioner Condalaria?
Yes.
Commissioner Dominguez?
Yes.
Thank you. Commissioner McWilliams?
Yes.
Thank you. Commissioner Patton?
Yes.
Commissioner Rader? Commissioner Thompson?
Yes.
Commissioner Timmons?
Yes.
Commissioner Velazquez?
Yes.
Commissioner Veehill?
Yes.
Let me see if, Commissioner Modi, have you joined us? And Chair Stringer, how do you vote?
Yes.
Madam Chair, the motion passes.
Thank you. Moving on, next we have Case 21-16, Triad National Security and DOE's withdrawal of petition for the rulemaking. And I will ask the petitioner to introduce the withdrawal. Not sure who that is specifically.
Madam Hearing Officer, this is Louis Rose with Montgomery Andrews. And at the conclusion of the last triennial, the hearing officer, actually, after the conclusion, the hearing officer asked whether we wanted to proceed with the separate petition we had filed as a protective petition. And both Triad and DOE agreed not to pursue it. So we submitted the withdrawal, which should end the matter at this point.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. Rose. Counsel Sanchez, there's no further action required by the commission. We just accept the withdrawal?
That is correct, Madam Chair, and Pam can go ahead and take it off the docket.
Thank you. Okay, next on our agenda is the hearing in the matter of the petition to designate the surface waters of the Upper Pecos watershed as outstanding national resource waters. And before we proceed with the hearing, I just wanted to clarify the requirements for the hearing officer reports and the schedule for deliberations. Counsel Sanchez, do we need to do that on the record of the hearing or do we do it prior to the hearing starting?
Madam Chair, I think it'd be preferable for that to be on the record.
Okay. So with that, I will turn the floor over to our hearing officer, which is Mr. Gregory Chakalian.
Good morning, Commissioners, parties, and members of the public. On behalf of the Office of Public Facilitation, I hereby call to order the petition to designate the surface waters of the Upper Pecos Watershed as outstanding national resource waters. This petition was filed on October 1st, 2021 by the Village of Pecos, San Miguel County, the Upper Pecos Watershed Association, the New Mexico Asequia Association, and Molina de la Isla Organics LLC to order docketed as WQCC 21-51 rulemaking. Ms. Aragine, are you transcribing this verbatim?
I am, yes.
And you'll be swearing in the witnesses?
Yes.
All right. My name is Gregory Chakalian, the appointed hearing officer by Chair Stringer on November 30th, 2021, with the powers and duties outlined in 20.1.6.100 NMAC. Hosting this WebEx event is Commission Administrator Pamela Jones. This rulemaking was properly noticed in the New Mexico Register and as otherwise required under 20.1.6.201 NMAC and is being held on a virtual WebEx platform to increase public participation. The public is encouraged to participate by using the chat feature to alert the host, Ms. Jones, that you want to provide general, which means non-technical, comments or to cross-examine a witness. General comment will be taken at 12:00 noon and 5:00 PM today, and each speaker will be limited to five minutes. If the hearing continues on subsequent days, those times will be the same. This rulemaking is being transcribed verbatim by a court reporter and recorded via WebEx. Please keep your microphone muted until it is your turn to speak. All the documents referred to during today's rulemaking can be found on the New Mexico Environment website under the Public Participation menu. The following background is in the petitioner's words. As the communities that depend upon the Upper Pecos Watershed know so well, Agua Esvida, the waters of this watershed sustain and enrich the lives and livelihoods of all who live, work, and recreate there. For centuries, the Upper Pecos Watershed has supported robust communities. As a footnote, the term Upper Pecos Watershed refers to the perennial and non-perennial streams and wetlands nominated in this petition and identified in Maps 1 and 2 and Tables 1 and 2 in Section 2B of the petition. For generations, the Upper Pecos Watershed supported the Pecos Pueblo peoples and to this day remains culturally significant to their descendants. The Upper Pecos Watershed supports a rich tradition of farming, ranching, asequias, and other traditional uses, all of which depend on clean water. Thanks in large measure to a long history of respect and stewardship. Among those who call the area home, most of the waters of the Upper Pecos Watershed remain clean and healthy today. These waters are not only among New Mexico's most outstanding resources for people, but for animals and plants as well. These waters feed exceptional ecosystems that support an astounding diversity of animals and plants, including New Mexico state fish and the Rio Grande cutthroat trout. One of the most effective ways to deliver on the promise of clean water for present and future generations is to protect our most ecologically and recreationally significant waters pursuant to the commission's regulations. Accordingly, petitioners nominate all perennial and non-perennial streams and wetlands shown in Map 1 Streams and Map 2 Wetlands and listed in Table 1 Streams and Table 2 Wetlands. These waters encompass the main stem of the Pecos River from the boundary of the Pecos Wilderness downstream to the U.S. Forest Service Dalton Fishing Site picnic site. Fifteen named tributaries from their confluence with the Pecos River upstream to the headwaters or to the Pecos Wilderness Boundary, whichever comes first. Ninety-six identified non-perennial waters that are tributaries to one of the sixteen named waters and sixteen identified wetlands. Now, according to the rules under 20.1.6 and back, the commission may choose to deliberate immediately following the conclusion of the public hearing or at a subsequent meeting, but shall reach its decision no later than 60 days following the close of the record or the date of the hearing officer's report, if requested, whichever is later. That is found at 20.1.6.306 subsection C and MAC. The following parties have prefiled full written technical testimony and marked exhibits in this case, the New Mexico Environment Department's Surface Water Quality Bureau of the Water Protection Division, and the petitioners listed above, and Mr. Dennis McQuillan. As a preliminary matter, let's hear from the parties regarding exhibits and stipulations. So let's start with the petitioners. How many exhibits are you seeking to introduce into evidence?
Good morning, Mr. Hearing Officer, and good morning, Madam Chair and the Commissioners. This is Kelly Noakes on behalf of petitioners. We, at the outset, you know, we'd like to note that we did contact Mr. Verheul and Mr. McQuillan, the other parties, and they have stipulated to the admission of all exhibits in this matter. And we put forward 27 exhibits in our notice of intent to file direct testimony.
Okay. So are there any objections? I know, Ms. Noakes, you just said that you've contacted them, but on the record, are there any objections to the petitioner's 27 exhibits at this time?
Good morning, Mr. Hearing Officer, John Verheul, representing New Mexico Environment Department Surface Water Quality Bureau. We have no objection to admission of any of petitioner's exhibits.
And do we have Mr. McQuillan?
Yes, Mr. Hearing Officer, I have no objection to the exhibits.
Exhibit, petitioner's exhibits, 1 through 27 are hereby admitted into evidence. And Ms. Aragine, will you keep track of the exhibits?
Yes.
Okay. And have you received any of the exhibits yet?
I have not, but I find them on the website.
Okay, all right. Ms. Noakes, have you checked the website to make sure that all 27 exhibits are on our website and that they're correct?
Yes, Mr. Hearing Officer.
Okay. Okay, Ms. Aragine, that's a good source. Now let's go to the environments exhibits. Mr. Verheul, how many exhibits do you seek to introduce?
Thirty-eight, Mr. Hearing Officer.
Okay. And Ms. Noakes and Mr. McQuillan, are there any objections to the 38 exhibits from the Environment Department?
No objections from petitioners, Mr. Hearing Officer.
No objection, Mr. Hearing Officer.
So Ms. Aragine, New Mexico Environment Department's exhibits, 1 through 38 are admitted into evidence. And Mr. Verheul, do you know if all 38 are correctly identified on the website?
I do not, Mr. Hearing Officer, but I will double check that shortly.
Thank you, appreciate it. Once you find out that they are, will you send a message to Ms. Jones and she will let me know?
I will do so.
Wonderful. It's my, Mr. McQuillan, do you have any exhibits?
Yes, Mr. Hearing Officer, I have two exhibits and they are both posted on the department's website for the petition in this matter.
Okay. And Ms. Noakes and Mr. Verheul, are there any objections to Mr. McQuillan's two exhibits?
No objections on behalf of petitioners, Mr. Hearing Officer.
No objections from the department.
Okay, then I'm going to admit exhibits 1 and 2 from Mr. McQuillan into evidence. And they are posted, so Mr. McQuillan, you don't have to get back to me on that. Okay. It's my understanding that the reason there is no rebuttal evidence submitted in this case is because all of the witnesses that will be called today are in favor of the petition. Is that correct, Ms. Noakes?
That is correct on behalf of petitioners.
And Mr. Verheul?
That is correct on behalf of the Environment Department.
Mr. McQuillan?
Yes, Mr. Hearing Officer, that's correct.
Okay, all right. Well, we've dealt with that preliminary matter, let's continue. Now that the exhibits are admitted into evidence, they may be used in findings of fact and conclusions of law. Any other exhibit not on this list must be entered during the hearing. The party offering such an exhibit into evidence has the burden of establishing a foundation and its authenticity through a witness. As the parties have already prefiled full written technical testimony and have decided not to submit rebuttal testimony, each witness has up to 30 minutes in which to adopt their prefiled testimony under oath, making any corrections on the record, and provide a concise, plain English summary for the benefit of the public. This time limitation was agreed to by the parties and set out in a procedural order dated December 9, 2021. Ms. Jones will keep track and provide each witness with an alert five minutes before the time limit has been reached. All testimony will be taken under oath. All persons giving testimony will be subject to cross-examination by any other person in attendance on the subject matter of their testimony and on matters affecting their credibility. Under 20.1.6.301 and MAC, all relevant evidence shall be admitted unless I determine that the evidence is unduly repetitious or incompetent. The court reporter will swear in the witnesses. Now, do we have all the witnesses in attendance at this time?
Mr. Hearing Officer, this is Kelly Noakes again on behalf of petitioners. Unfortunately, one of petitioner's witnesses, Mr. Ralph Vehill, is in the hospital this morning and therefore unable to testify today. We have contacted the other parties and NMED does not object to the admission of Mr. Vehill's prefiled written testimony, waiving their right to cross-examination. And we would like to ask the same of Mr. McQuillan as well.
I agree.
Okay. Mr. McQuillan, Mr. McQuillan, the parties don't speak to each other through this platform. Everything is addressed to me and then I'll ask you for your position, okay?
Yes, sir. Apologize, thank you.
No, no problem. So do the parties have objections to swearing in all the witnesses at one time?
Mr. Hearing Officer, if I could excuse you one more, one more time. Our two additional experts are not available this morning. We have petitioner's expert, Ms. Paula Garcia, and Dr. David Probst, who had scheduling conflicts for this morning. So we would like to respectfully request that they be permitted to testify potentially out of order this afternoon if it's necessary.
Of course, of course. The way I see the rule, since we don't have any adverse witnesses, it's not quite as critical to have a particular order. I will ask your witnesses to go first, and then the department's witnesses will go after that, and then Mr. McQuillan can testify and his witnesses can go after that. And then we will call Witness Garcia and Probst when they are available. So that's not a problem. But how many witnesses, Ms. Noakes, do you have present right now?
Mr. Hearing Officer, we are just missing those three out of the original 10, so we have seven witnesses present currently.
You have seven. Would those seven witnesses turn on their cameras? And Ms. Noakes, will you let me know when you see all seven of them?
Yes, Mr. Hearing Officer.
And Ms. Noakes, could you say all the seven names for me, please?
Of course, of course. We have, I'll show an order of them appearing on my screen. We have the Honorable Second Lieutenant Governor Vince Toya on behalf of the HEMES Pueblo. We have Mr. Frank Poncho Adello. We have Ms. Janice Varela. We have Ms. Leila McFerrin. Ms. Rachel Kahn. Mr. Talisfora Benavides, Mayor of Village Pecos, and Ms. Toner Mitchell. And I believe that's all. And I would also like to introduce my co-counsel, Ms. Tanis Fox here as well.
Welcome, Ms. Fox.
And Judge, before we do this, may I take a moment to deal with a technical issue? Shouldn't take too long.
Good morning, can you hear me?
Excuse me, we're off the record at the moment.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you so much.
Ms. Aragine, I've been notified by the administrator that all of NMED's 38 exhibits are correctly listed on the website.
Thank you.
All right. NMED, are all of your witnesses present?
I believe they are, Mr. Hearing Officer. Would you like them to turn on their video?
Please, and would you list their names for the court reporter?
Indeed. We have Ms. Jennifer Fulham, F-U-L-L-A-M, and Ms. Diana Aranda, A-R-A-N-D-A.
Okay. And Mr. McQuillan, are you going to testify?
Yes, Mr. Hearing Officer, I am my only witness.
You're your only witness, okay. So Ms. Aragine, you have all of the witnesses except for three that were listed in the NOIs, two of which that will testify this afternoon and won't be sworn in at this time. But would you swear in all the other witnesses?
Yes. If you would all please raise your right hands. Do you and each of you solemnly swear or affirm the testimony you will give will be the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth?
I do.
I do.
Yes, I do.
I do.
I guess.
I do.
I do.
I will assume everybody said, "I do."
Ms. Aragine, would you swear in Mr. Velazquez again? I didn't see him raise his right hand.
Mr. Velazquez, if you would raise your right hand.
Higher, he's higher.
Am I, am I a witness?
Yeah, he's a commissioner.
Your camera was on, so I thought you were a witness. Excuse me. Okay, let's proceed then. We will address post-hearing procedures after the evidentiary record is closed. I will conduct the hearing so as to provide a reasonable opportunity for all persons to be heard without making the hearing unreasonably lengthy or cumbersome. The rules of civil procedure and the rules of evidence do not apply, but I will make whatever orders are necessary to preserve the quorum and to protect the orderly hearing process. All right. Are there any other preliminary matters to address before we take opening statements? All right.
Mr. Chakalian, is this the appropriate time to address hearing officer's report or when we're going to deliberate?
I, Chair Stringer, I, I think you can address it at any time you so choose, but I would think that after hearing the testimony and seeing the evidence, the, the commission may make a decision at that time on how on how complex of a case it is and the necessity of the report, or choose to deliberate. So, uh, we can do it at any time you like, but I thought it would be at the end of the evident, when the record is closed.
Okay, that makes sense to me, um, so we'll address it at that time.
Thank you. So, petitioner, you're gonna go first, so Ms. Noakes, are you making the opening statement?
That's correct, Mr. Hearing Officer.
All right, let's have a brief opening statement.
Thank you, well, good morning, Mr. Hearing Officer, Madam Chair and Commissioners. Uh, my name is Kelly Noakes, along with my co-counsel, Tanis Fox. We are attorneys at the Western Environmental Law Center, and we are here today representing five petitioners in this petition to designate the waters of the Upper Pecos Watershed as outstanding national resource waters, a petition that was filed with the commission on October first of two thousand twenty-one. And it's that an outstanding waters designation protects New Mexico's most exceptional waters and provides the highest level of protection in the state by prohibiting any new degradation to water quality while still respecting and allowing the continuation of a pre-existing traditional land use activities such as grazing and asequia operations. This petition before you today reflects a community-driven effort brought forward by a diverse group of local governments and local and statewide community and business organizations. The petitioners include the Village of Pecos, San Miguel County, the Upper Pecos Watershed Association, the New Mexico Asequia Association, and Molino de la Isla Organics LLC. This petition nominates the Pecos River from its northern wilderness boundary to its confluence with Dalton Canyon, fifteen named tributaries to the Pecos, and ninety-six unnamed tributaries to these sixteen waters. All told, these waters constitute almost one hundred and eighty miles of streams. Petitioners also nominate sixteen wetlands consisting of almost forty-three acres. The nominated waters are shown in petitioner's Exhibit Five. The nominated waters of the Upper Pecos Watershed are truly exceptional and deserving of designation as outstanding waters in accordance with the state's regulations at twenty point six point four point nine NMAC. As demonstrated by petitioner's testimony and exhibit submitted in our notice of intent to submit direct technical testimony on March tenth, and as will be summarized by our witnesses today, all nominated waters meet a number of criteria for designation. Petitioner's Exhibit Four is a chart describing each nominated water and which criteria that waterway meets. In short, designation of all nominated waters is beneficial to the state of New Mexico as required by twenty point six point four point nine point B NMAC. All nominated waters meet both the exceptional ecological and exceptional recreational criteria of twenty point six point four point nine B two, and many waters meet other criteria as well. To be designated, the water body must meet only one of the criteria in twenty point six point four point nine B one through three. The nominated waters support one of the most ecologically diverse and significant areas of our state, from its abundance of wildlife, including mammals like the black bear and Rocky Mountain big horn sheep, amphibians and fish like the northern leopard frog and Rio Grande cutthroat trout, and bird life like the paragon falcon, bald eagle, and Mexican spotted owl. The nominated area is also home to a rich and diverse plant life and supports one federally endangered and number of state-endangered and special status plant species. Additionally, the nominated waters represent some of the most outstanding recreational areas in the state. Annually, thousands recreate at the seven U.S. Forest Service campgrounds in the nominated area, where people from the local community, state, and beyond come to camp, hike, backpack, horseback ride, hunt, birdwatch, photograph, mountain bike, and raft. The waters of the Upper Pecos are renowned for trout fishing, and the riparian habitats surrounding the nominated streams and wetlands supports numerous species of economic and recreational importance as identified by the New Mexico Department of Game and Fish. The petitioners have worked very closely on this nomination with the New Mexico Environment Department over the past two years, and we sincerely thank the Surface Water Quality Bureau's staff for all their work and assistance and for the department's full support of this nomination. In addition, the New Mexico Department of Game and Fish supports the nomination, and Director Sloan recently submitted a letter of support into the record on behalf of the department. We very much appreciate Game and Fish's support of this nomination as well. We are pleased to now present our case before the commission, and we will call nine witnesses today. First, the Honorable Second Lieutenant Governor Vincent Toya of the HEMAS Pueblo. Second Lieutenant Governor Toya will discuss the cultural significance of protecting the nominated waters to the HEMAS and Pecos peoples, protection that is beneficial to the state. Second, Ms. Janice Varela, County Commissioner for District Two of petitioner San Miguel County, will discuss the ecological and recreational exceptionality of the waters and the economic importance of protecting the waters to San Miguel County and the state. Similarly, Mayor Telisfor Benavides, Mayor of petitioner Village of Pecos, will discuss the economic importance of protecting the waters to the Village of Pecos and their importance to that community. Fourth, Mr. Frank or Poncho Adello, the President of petitioner Upper Pecos Watershed Association, will discuss the abundance of recreational activities in the nominated area with particular focus on the exceptional trout fishing in the Pecos and its tributaries, which saw over one hundred and fifty-eight thousand angler days during the two thousand twenty-one license year. He will also discuss the importance to local farmers and ranchers who depend on these waters for their livelihood of keeping the watershed clean. Fifth, Ms. Leila McFerrin, the Vice President of Upper Pecos Watershed Association, will discuss the extensive community outreach conducted throughout the nomination proceedings and will highlight the broad local, statewide, and national support for this nomination as shown in petitioner's Exhibit Sixteen, which is a compilation of letters of support. Since we filed our NOI, over sixteen hundred and other individuals and organizations have written in support of the petition. This is a nomination with wide-ranging support, and no party has filed in opposition. Six petitioners will call Ms. Rachel Kahn, the Deputy Director of Amigos Bravos, a statewide water conservation organization. Ms. Kahn will provide an overview how petitioners have met all procedural and public notice requirements for the designation. She will also explain how each of the nominated waters meets more than one of the designation criteria in Section twenty point six point four point nine NMAC. Seventh, Mr. Toner Mitchell, the New Mexico Water and Habitat Program Director for Trout Unlimited, will discuss the exceptional recreational and ecological significance of the nominated waters and how the nomination will serve to benefit the state overall. Eighth, Ms. Paula Garcia, the Executive Director of petitioner New Mexico Asequia Association, will discuss the Asequia Association's support for the nomination, explaining the significance of outstanding waters protections to the state's traditional asequia users and how this benefits the state. Finally, petitioners will call Dr. David Probst. Dr. Probst is a national expert and an AMJAC research professor at the University of New Mexico. He is a former employee of the New Mexico Department of Game and Fish, where he worked as a project leader in the native fish section of the department for nearly twenty-seven years. Dr. Probst will discuss how all nominated waters meet the exceptional ecological significance criterion of Section twenty point six point four point nine B two NMAC, and in particular, how the non-perennial waters included in the nomination are essential to the ecological health, integrity, and significance of the Upper Pecos Watershed as a whole. Unfortunately, Mr. Ralph V. Hill, owner of petitioner Molino de la Isla Organics, is unable to join us to testify today because he is in the hospital. Mr. V. Hill's farm relies on the water from the Asequia del Molino, which draws water from the Pecos River immediately downstream from the nominated main stretch. Mr. V. Hill is also Chair of the New Mexico Asequia Commission. He understands as a parciante and state leader the importance of maintaining the overall health of the watershed to the more than fifty-five downstream asequias that feed directly or indirectly from the Pecos River. Mr. V. Hill's prefiled written testimony has been admitted with our NOI, and the parties have agreed to waive their rights to cross-examination of Mr. V. Hill under the circumstances. With that, on behalf of petitioners, we thank you, Mr. Hearing Officer, Madam Chair, and Commission members, for giving us this opportunity to bring this diverse set of experts and community members before you today to provide evidence and support of the petition to nominate the waters of the Upper Pecos Watershed as outstanding national resource waters, and we thank you for your consideration of this important nomination.
Ms. Noakes, would you call your first witness?
Yes, Mr. Hearing Officer. Petitioners would first like to call Vincent Toya as a witness. Would you please state your name for the record, Mr. Toya?
Hi, good morning, everyone, uh, I'm, uh, Second Lieutenant Vincent E. Toya.
Thank you, Mr. Toya, do you hold an elected position, and what is that if so?
Uh, yes, I do, I serve as the Second Lieutenant Governor for the Pueblo of HEMAS.
Second Lieutenant Governor Toya, would you please describe your relevant experience as a witness in this matter?
Yes, I'd love to, um. The Pueblo of HEMAS has spiritual and cultural connections to the Pecos area, as our Pecos ancestors lived in this area since twelve hundred. Uh, in eighteen thirty-eight, the Pecos Pueblo, uh, Pecos people migrated to HEMAS Pueblo, and with this migration, the Pecos Pueblo was merged with, uh, HEMAS Pueblo by an act of Congress in the nineteen thirties. Along with the migration, the Pecos people brought their governor king, at which time, HEMAS Pueblo placed this king with our secular leadership, instilling the Second Lieutenant Governor of HEMAS Pueblo. Consequently, I am speaking here today on behalf of our HEMAS and Pecos peoples to communicate our support for the protection of the Upper Pecos Watershed as an outstanding national resource waters. Pecos Pueblo, which translates to the place above the water, is an ancestral Pueblo for Pecos descendants who currently live at the Pueblo of HEMAS. The Pueblo feels strongly about the need for protecting this pristine water source. This stretch of the Pecos River is the lifeblood of our people, and the ecosystems that are connected to this special place on our Pecos ancestral homeland is too precious not to conserve for future generations.
Thank you, Second Lieutenant Governor Toya, you prepared testimony for this proceeding, which is Exhibit Eighteen, is that correct?
Yes, I did.
Is your testimony accurate to the best of your knowledge?
Yes.
Second Lieutenant Governor Toya would now like to present his testimony before the commission. Second Lieutenant Governor Toya, please proceed with your presentation.
Thank you, Mr. Hearing Officer, Madam Chair, and Commissioners, for providing me with this opportunity to speak with you today. Our Pecos ancestors called the Pecos River Tonga Baggy, which can be interpreted as Corn Cob River because its water sustained the people and the corn that was planted by them up and down the Pecos River Valley, or as we call it, Tonga Baggy Walmart, Corn Cob River Valley. Today, the descendants of the Pecos continue to visit the sacred shrines on the Pecos ancestral homeland, including the Upper Pecos Watershed, and perform ceremonies using the sacred waters of the Pecos River. We, as HEMAS people, see the sacredness of the water ecosystems that sustain life to all the birds and animals, plants, and aquatic life that humans greatly benefit from. The waterways are our trailways and are part of our migratory stories. Clean water and the connectedness of water, land, and people is critical and vital for our health and well-being. To ensure the well-being of future generations of peoples that connect themselves to the Pecos River, HEMAS Pueblo and the descendants of Pecos Pueblo enthusiastically support designating the Upper Pecos Watershed as an outstanding national resource water. In closing, please accept the Pueblo of HEMAS and the descendants of Pecos Pueblo's full support for this petition. May your efforts and the efforts of your colleagues be blessed by our Creator, and may your lives be enriched with love and peace.
Thank you, Second Lieutenant Governor Toya. That concludes Second Lieutenant Governor Toya's direct testimony, and he will now stand for cross-examination from the parties and questions from the commission.
Do any of the parties have any cross-examination for this witness?
Mr. Hearing Officer, the department has no cross-examination questions, but does thank Second Lieutenant Governor Toya for his participation and testimony.
Mr. McQuillan?
Mr. Hearing Officer, I have no cross-examination for Lieutenant, Second Lieutenant Governor's excellent testimony, thank you.
Okay, Mr. McQuillan, if you're gonna address the commission, please turn on your camera when you do in the future.
Yes, sir.
Are there any members of the commission that have questions for Mr. Toya? Are there any members of the public that have crossed up, Ms. Stringer? Are there any members of the public? Thank you, Chair Stringer. Are there any members of the public who have cross-examination questions for this witness? Ms. Noakes, may this witness be excused?
Yes, Mr. Hearing Officer.
Would you call your second witness?
Gladly, um, petitioners will now call Ms. Janice Varela as a witness.
Good morning, everyone, thank you for this opportunity.
Please proceed.
Uh, please go ahead and state your name for the record, Ms. Varela.
Janice Varela.
Ms. Varela, do you hold an elected position, and what is that if so?
Yes, I am the San Miguel County Commissioner, representing District Two. I currently serve as Vice Chair of the San Miguel County Commission. This is my second year in my second term.
Commissioner Varela, will you please describe your relevant experience as a witness in this matter?
Yes, gladly. I'm a lifelong resident of Pecos, New Mexico. The people of my district elected me because of my history and commitment to protecting land and water, the Pecos River, and the Upper Pecos Watershed. I work tirelessly with my community in taking action to protect water, including water rights. My hope is to improve our local economies by promoting our natural resources and recreational opportunities. By enacting protection of water quality by designating the Upper Pecos Watershed as an outstanding national resource water or outstanding water, it will ensure that we have a sustainable future so that our river can thrive. As a Planning and Zoning Commissioner prior, I have advocated for protection of land use, waste management, and planning.
Thank you, Ms. Varela, is petitioner's Exhibit Twenty-six an accurate copy of your resume?
Yes.
And Commissioner Varela, you prepared testimony for this proceeding, which is Exhibit Twenty-five, is that correct? And is your testimony accurate to the best of your knowledge? Ms. Varela, we're actually having a hard time hearing you all of a sudden.
She's muted.
Did we accidentally mute?
I accidentally muted.
Ms. Noakes, uh, as a matter of record, it just occurred to me that even though you asked Mr. Toya, and while he's still with us, whether he had any corrections, I don't remember you're asking if he adopted his written testimony under oath. Do you want to do that at this time?
Sure, thank you, Mr. Hearing Officer. Um, Second Lieutenant Governor Toya, do we still have you with us?
Uh, yes, I'm still here.
Uh, would you please confirm that you would like to adopt your testimony under oath?
Yes, I would like to.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Ms. Varela, turning back to you, um, I'm gonna go back to where we thought we we lost, you muted there. So, um, is petitioner's Exhibit Twenty-six an accurate copy of your resume?
Yes.
And Commissioner Varela, you prepared testimony for this proceeding, which is Exhibit Twenty-five, is that correct?
Yes.
And is your testimony accurate to the best of your knowledge?
Yes.
And would you like to confirm that you would like to adopt your testimony under oath here today?
Yes.
Thank you, um, Commissioner Varela would like to present her testimony before the commission, and Commissioner Varela, please go ahead and proceed.
Thank you, thank you, Mr. Hearing Officer, Madam Chair, and Commissioners for providing me with this opportunity to speak with you today. San Miguel County, New Mexico, was founded in eighteen fifty-two, named for San Miguel del Vado, and is comprised of a total landmass of four thousand seven hundred thirty-six square miles. Hit the key button again, I apologize, I'm holding my papers away from that keyboard, I apologize. Of which four thousand seven hundred sixteen square miles is land and twenty square miles is water. The Pecos River has its origins in the Pecos High Country, and the Guaynes River is a main tributary. Both rivers support life throughout this high desert county. These rivers and surrounding watershed provide water for agriculture, farming, and ranching, which has been a mainstay industry in the county since its inception. According to the U.S. Census, the population of the county was estimated to be twenty-seven thousand two hundred seventy-seven in July of two thousand nineteen. Nearly eighty percent of residents in San Miguel County identify as Hispanic. The median household income in two thousand nineteen was thirty thousand nine hundred forty-six dollars, with about twenty-four percent of our residents living in poverty. Many of our residents have been in Pecos and San Miguel County for their entire lives and for many generations. Pecos is more than a pretty place, it is our home, and unlike many people that I have encountered who have worked and moved from coast to coast, we cannot imagine living anyplace else. Neighbors take care of each other, and many families still live together in extended households. Neighbors take care of each other, and many families still live together in extended households. Natural resources and their protection are critical for our people and wildlife and are essential for continuation of farming and ranching practices. National protected areas in our county include the Las Vegas National Wildlife Refuge, Pecos National Historical Park, and the Santa Fe National Forest. Our national forest lands offer a plethora of opportunity to many recreationists, hunters, anglers, and hikers. We are home to the Pecos wilderness and a wild and scenic section of the Pecos River. Our region provides over 100 miles of high-quality cold-water fishing. Holy Ghost Canyon in the Pecos is the only place on planet Earth where the endangered flower, Holy Ghost Iphomocis, grows. We are home to the federally protected Mexican spotted owl, a native Rio Grande cutthroat trout. The Pecos River and Upper Pecos watershed as a whole holds special significance to the natives who have lived in Pecos all of their lives. Many residents rely on wildlife and fish to feed their families and proudly pass these hunting and fishing traditions on to the next generation. Culinary treasures abound in our forest as well. We gather herbs and medicine to heal ourselves. Vinon gathering and gathering of wild foods are still practiced and very important to our people and cultural survival. With that water, we cannot live. The saying goes, "El agua es vida," water is life. No person or species can live without it. Our pueblo ancestors moved here from places such as Chaco and Mesa Verde and other sites, no longer suited to sustain life without water. In November 2019, I presented the resolution for adoption by the San Miguel County Commission, stating our support for obtaining outstanding waters designation for our local river and its tributaries, the Upper Pecos watershed. The resolution passed unanimously without controversy. My fellow commissioners also recognize the importance of water and ensuring this vital local resource is duly protected. Designation of the waters of the Upper Pecos watershed as an outstanding water will benefit our community by protecting the precious, high-quality water resources that are so important for recreational, agricultural, and economic activities for residents and visitors alike. Our local, our local economies depend on the health of our river, and outstanding waters protections will help our local economy and communities to thrive both now and into the future. Growing up in the Pecos was a gift that has shaped who I am as a person and who I am as a community leader. My gift was being able to enjoy nature, swimming, fishing, camping, and gathering herbs and berries with my family. My wish is that this continues. My new role as a grandmother is to share these gifts with my grandchildren and teach them the lessons that I have learned in the woods. My father and his father were well-known fly anglers and considered the best in the village. My father's last words on his deathbed were, "Teach the boy to fish." I support the designation of the waters of the Upper Pecos watershed as outstanding national resource waters and respectfully request that the Water Quality Control Commission grant petitioner's request to designate the Upper Pecos watershed as outstanding waters.
Thank you, Commissioner Varela. That concludes Commissioner Varela's direct testimony, and she will now stand for cross-examination from the parties and questions from the commission.
Do either of the parties have any cross-examination for this witness?
Mr. Hearing Officer, the Environment Department has no cross-examination questions, but thanks Commissioner Varela for her participation and testimony.
You're welcome. Thank you.
Mr. Hearing Officer, I have no questions. Thank you.
Thank you. Do any of the commissioners have cross-examination for this witness? Do any of the public members with us have cross-examination for this witness? Ms. Snopes, may this witness be excused?
Yes, Mr. Hearing Officer.
Okay, and I would like to make a comment at this time. From my experience with this commission, this public body, I can say that everyone here is well-prepared. I would bet that the commissioners have read the evidence, the prefiled testimony provided by each witness. And I suggest that the summary that each witness is going to give today, instead of reading what is already in the record as evidence, that time be used to add to, or to give context to, or to translate technical terms into plain English for public members. And that is my suggestion to the parties. So, Ms. Snopes, would you like to call your third witness?
Thank you, Mr. Hearing Officer. Petitioners will now call Mr. Telesfor Benavides. Mr. Benavides, will you state your name for the record?
Good morning, everyone. My name is Telesfor Benavides. I go by Ted.
Thank you. Mr. Benavides, do you hold an elected position and what is that if so?
I do. I was elected recently into my second term as the village mayor of Pecos. I have been the mayor since March 6, 2018.
Great, thank you. Mayor Benavides, please describe your relevant experience as a witness in this matter.
I was born in Santa Fe, New Mexico, and raised in Pecos. My family bought a house in Pecos in 1960, which is right in front of the Pecos River. I graduated, I went to Highlands for my freshman year, then I joined the Marine Corps. Then I came back home. As a mayor, I make sure that the village has water, sewer, party apartment, and ambulance service. I've established protocol and open direct lines of communication between the village and higher echelons of law enforcement to address citizen complaints and ensure a safer, more perceived illegal drug culture in the community. I worked with teachers and kids from Pecos Independent School recently. I worked with Dr. Bennett, who opened a medical center in the village that will provide free-of-charge care to the community.
Thank you, Mayor Benavides. You prepared testimony for this proceeding, which is Exhibit 27. Is that correct?
Yes.
And is your testimony accurate to the best of your knowledge?
Yes, it is.
And would you like to confirm that you will adopt your testimony under oath here today?
Yes, I do.
Mr. Benavides would now like to present his testimony before the commission, so please proceed with your presentation.
This week, we started cleaning the ditches, which is very important. We started cleaning the seccas to open our ditches. The waters of the Pecos are among New Mexico's most treasured assets. Our river is what brings people to our town to visit, which helps the economy of the village. I believe that the river has one of the freshest waters in the state of New Mexico, ensuring that the water of the Pecos are protected for the benefits of current future residents and visitors of Pecos Village. It's vital to the health of our community. There is not a summer that I do not visit the river. I take my nieces and nephews to pick rocks on the river, mostly heart-shaped rocks, as my granddaughter likes. I know that the Canadian members do the same. They go to the river for peace and quiet. Our kids swim in the river. With all local taxes increases to our community and a minimal amount of debt, the current Pecos Village administration has reached significant milestones to improve the quality of life of the citizens and provide a safer hire and I'm sorry, pro-propressiveness. I have such a hard work community. We care about the river and the surrounding waters so much that we constructed a $6.5 million watershed treatment plant. The village of Pecos encourages the New Mexico Water Quality Commission to grant petitioner's request to designate the waters of the Pecos watershed as an outstanding national water resource. Our river is one of the best water resources we can get, and it is a light likelihood of our community. It fuels our economy. It is a place for us to go tubing, swimming, fishing, year-round. The river is precious and needs to be protected so that our future generations, like my nephew and my niece, can use and also. Thank you.
Thank you, Mayor Benavides. That concludes Mayor Benavides' direct testimony, and he will now stand for cross-examination from the parties and questions from the commission.
Are there any parties that wish to cross-examine? Mr. Benavides?
No questions from the department, Mr. Hearing Officer, and we thank Mayor Benavides for his testimony.
Thank you all.
Mr. Hearing Officer, I have no questions for the mayor. Thank you.
Do any commissioners have questions for this witness? Do any members of the public have questions for this witness? Ms. Snopes, may this witness be excused?
Yes, thank you, Mr. Hearing Officer.
Would you call your fourth witness, please?
Yes, petitioners will now call Frank or Poncho Adello. Will you please state your name for the record?
My name is Frank Poncho Adello.
Thank you, Mr. Adello. Thank you, Mr. Adello. Will you please describe your relevant experience as a witness in this matter?
So, I was born and raised in Pecos. My family has been in business, providing goods and services for residents and visitors in the Pecos Valley for a hundred, for the past 103 years. I currently own a convenience store and a takeout restaurant. I own 12 acres of irrigated pastureland and farmland on the Aseca de El Bolino, adjacent to the Pecos River in the heart of the village. I am also president of the Upper Pecos Watershed Association, UPWA, a petitioner in this matter, and before that, I was its vice president since its inception in 2006.
Thank you, Mr. Adello. And is petitioner's Exhibit 20 an accurate copy of your resume?
Yes, it is.
And Mr. Adello, you prepared testimony for this proceeding, which is Exhibit 19. Is that correct?
Yes, ma'am.
And is your testimony accurate to the best of your knowledge?
Yes, it is.
And would you please confirm for the record today that you would like to adopt your testimony under oath here today?
Yes, I would.
Thank you. Mr. Adello would like to present his testimony before the commission, and so please proceed, Mr. Adello.
Thank you. Thank you, Hearing Officer, Madam Chair, and Commissioners for providing me the opportunity to speak with you. I was fortunate to grow up next to New Mexico's, one of New Mexico's premier trout fisheries, in an area before cell phones and video games. In grade school, my friends and I would ride our bikes to the Pecos River and fish. I caught my first fish behind the Pecos Benedictine monastery. As soon as I could drive, in eighth grade or so, I would get my father's truck and race up the canyon to wet a line before dark. I took a keen interest in trout fishing, especially fly fishing. I attended college in Western Massachusetts and received my degree from the University of Massachusetts in Economics. My fly rod accompanied me eastward. My first experience fishing in New England was on the Deerfield River. Every pullout on the road that meandered with the Deerfield River had warning signs for horns that signaled impending rise in water level. As I drove up the valley, I came across a gigantic structure. It was Yankee Row Nuclear Power Plant, America's third nuclear power plant. And it was striking to see such an enormous structure in such a picturesque rural setting. On another crest for trout, I drove up to New Hampshire and came across a stream that looked ideal for trout, except that it had a brownish tinge and was void of any insect life. I found out later that there was a paper mill upstream. So, these experiences made me realize that water quality, no matter what the setting, is not always guaranteed. So, when I returned home after college, I was determined to preserve the Upper Pecos watershed. Serving as president of UPWA is part of my work to protect this exceptional area. UPWA was formed in 2006 by residents concerned about the watershed. And our main goals are to protect and improve the health of the watershed, address significant and environmental issues in the watershed, and preserve traditional and cultural uses for the benefit of the local economy. The Pecos Canyon is a hotspot for tourists from Santa Fe, Albuquerque, surrounding New Mexican communities, and surrounding states. And one way UPWA is trying to address the environmental concerns is to focus on the overuse of campgrounds and recreation areas within the watershed. To date, UPWA has been awarded 14 Section 319 grants from the U.S. Environmental Protection Agency, and we have received approximately 1.6 million for implementation, public outreach, for restoration work on the watershed. And UPWA was a leading advocate for the creation of Pecos Canyon State Park. The watershed is part of the Rio Grande Basin, located in north-central New Mexico, about 10 to 20 miles east of Santa Fe. And the area covered by our watershed extends from the headwaters of the Pecos River in the wilderness and its tributaries, to the point where Interstate 25 crosses the river. Our watershed includes the communities of Pecos, Terretto, Colos, Glorieta, Upper and Lower Colonia, North and San Isidro, North and South San Isidro, Row, and San Jose. The village of Pecos is the only incorporated municipality within our upper watershed. Pecos is a small community, and we can all agree here in town that the river is our lifeblood. Our community views the Upper Pecos watershed as a whole interconnected system. There's nothing more relaxing than to sit by the river and just be. One of the best things, especially in these past couple of years, is to throw rocks in the river as kind of a symbolic way of letting go of your worries. Of the many visitors that I speak with, and many well-seasoned visitors who have traveled the world, they tell me how special the Upper Pecos watershed is. There's a lot of adventure packed into our area, as much as any part of New Mexico. Pecos is an ancient place. The history, the culture, the beauty, and the diversity of nominated waters serve as a tremendous backdrop for all that there is to experience here. Recreational tourism in the nominated area will not only include fishing, camping, and hiking, but also birding, biking, nature photographer, nature photography, skiing, snowshoeing, tubing, and snowmobiling as well. This area is extremely important to our farmers. There are many local farms in the area that rely on clean water to irrigate their crops. "Agua es vida," and the waters and aquatic life of New Mexico's Upper Pecos watershed sustain our farmers and ranchers as they depend on it for their livelihoods and their way of life. In short, the nominated waters of the Upper Pecos watershed play a vital role contributing to our state's economy, recreational activities, and natural beauty. Protecting the nominated waters as ONRW would benefit the state by preserving and enhancing these economic, recreational, and natural resources for present and future generations by preventing degradation of the high-quality waters that are the lifeblood of the Pecos region. It is important to note that the Pecos River and its tributaries can still brag of its high qualities. Yes, we do have an abandoned mine on the watershed. But because of the actions undertaken by the state and the former owners of the mine, water quality and the Upper Pecos watershed have improved over the past 30 years. Let us imagine for a moment that you had to conduct a cost-benefit analysis of some project affecting water quality of the, of our, of our watershed. Part of that equation would quantify how many visitors are in, come, how many visitors the river sees and how much they spend getting to the river and enjoying it. And then you do the math, you do the multiplication. What the analysis cannot do, however, is put a figure on the number of people who would not accept having a high-quality watershed to use and enjoy. In other words, how much would you have to pay people not to have a high-quality watershed to enjoy? Whether it be for fishing, hunting, hiking, worshiping, biking, camping, or farming. Any cost-benefit analysis would be misleading because what the Upper Pecos watershed provides is priceless. You cannot put a price on what our high-quality water provides. With this being said, I urge you to support the nomination of the Upper Pecos watershed for ONRW status. Such a designation would be a huge benefit, not only to our local community, but also to the state, to the state as a whole and to all those who visit, work, and play in the Upper Pecos region for both today and future generations. Thank you, and that's what I have.
Thank you, Mr. Adello. That concludes Mr. Adello's direct testimony, and he will now stand for cross-examination from the parties and the commission.
Do any of the parties have cross-examination for this witness?
The department has no questions, and we thank Mr. Adello for his testimony.
Mr. Hearing Officer, I have no questions for Mr. Adello. Thank you.
Do any commissioners have cross-examination for this witness?
Mr. Hearing Officer?
Yes, Mr. Dominguez?
Thank you, Mr. Hearing Officer. Mr. Adello, thank you for your testimony. Mr. Adello, thank you for your testimony today.
Yeah, you're welcome.
Quickly interject here. In reading your rant and testimony and what you covered orally, I found one part there really, really interesting and intriguing to me. You pointed out that Pecos Canyon is a real hotspot for tourism. And one portion of what the Upper Pecos Watershed Association does is is to help deal or address the overuse and abuse of campgrounds, recreation areas, so forth. So given that, and the fact that if this is approved as an ONRW, that designation would likely be used to increase tourism. So under that scenario, how do you balance this issue of potentially having an increase in tourism and address the issue that you've already pointed out of the the overuse of the recreation and campground areas, which ultimately could lead to some degradation? So it seems to be this double-edged sword. Does that kind of make sense of what my question is there?
Yes, I see what you're getting at. The, so in 2020, we probably saw, we not probably saw, we saw the most numbers that we ever have seen in the canyon. The numbers in 2020 were incredible. One way is that the Upper Pecos Watershed that we just went to help with that is to, we actually provided porta-potties for people up the canyon. So having, but in order to continue this, I mean, tourism's going to increase all over New Mexico and probably all over the western states. But an honor designation does not necessarily mean that it's going to be, I mean, yes, people want to see an outstanding national resource water. But with, that's the importance of having this designation is in order to protect it as well. And with the increased numbers, that, yes, that is something we are going to have to be dealing with in the future. That's, there's no doubt about that.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Adello. It just kind of highlights a potential of a double-edged sword there. So I appreciate your comments and appreciate your feedback, Mr. Hearing Officer. That's all I have. Questions I have for this witness. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner Dominguez. Are there any other commissioners? Are there any members of the public? Ms. Noakes, may this witness be excused?
Yes, thank you, Mr. Hearing Officer.
Would you call your fifth witness?
Yes, petitioners will now call.
I'm sorry, I was muted. I'd like to say something to Poncho's testimony real quick.
Mr. Benavides, are you asking a question?
Well, I'd just like to say that what they've done to the campgrounds at the canyon and cleaning up the campgrounds is helping with the people coming in. They know that there's only so many spots, so as we get on more campgrounds and get them cleaned up and preserved so that people can use, I think it'll help with the rush of people that we have coming in. That's all I had to say, okay? Thank you, guys.
Thank you, Mayor Benavides. Petitioners will now call Ms. Lila McFerrin as a witness. We have Ms. McFerrin. There she is. Good morning, Ms. McFerrin. Will you please state your name for the record?
My name is Lila McFerrin.
Thank you. And will you please describe your relevant experience as a witness in this matter?
I'm the vice president of the Upper Pecos Watershed Association, UPWA, and have served on the board for 12 years, and have been project manager on five river restoration grants funded by Section 319 of the Federal Clean Water Act. Excuse me. Part of that, I was a paralegal for 25 years, specializing in environmental law and business, and a business owner in Santa Fe and Pecos for 25 years. My husband and I have lived on the banks of the Pecos for 46 years in the windy bridge area of the canyon, which is surrounded by Santa Fe National Forest and is part of the nominated area. We have seen the river at low flows, high flows, and from spring runoff, and several flooding events from six major wildfires in the area over the last 22 years of drought conditions. The worst of the flooding were our black water down the river, full of ash and debris from the Trace Laguna's fire, resulting in major fish kills and damage to farmlands and the Aseca system. I'm involved in my community and am a founding member of the Pecos Business Association.
Thank you, Ms. McFerrin. You prepared testimony for this proceeding, which is exhibit 15. Is that correct?
Yes, ma'am.
And is your testimony accurate to the best of your knowledge?
Yes, it is.
And would you confirm that you would like to adopt your testimony today under oath for the record?
Yes, I would.
And now Ms. McFerrin has prepared a short summary of her testimony, and so please proceed with your presentation.
Yes, I would. However, I would like to adopt our Hearing Officer's recommendation to only amend my summary because you already have it as exhibit 16, or exhibit 15, I believe. So I will only update that written summary, that written testimony, and not read my entire summary, if that's okay. You have in the record exhibit 16, excuse me. My testimony goes to the outreach to the public for our nomination of the Upper Pecos. You have exhibit 16 attached to our testimony, which shows that as of March 10th, we have received over 100 letters of support. As of yesterday, we've received a total of, excuse me, a total of 128 letters of support from elected officials, organizations, individuals, and businesses, 244 emails in support of the petition, and 1,354 signatures on two different petitions posted on the internet. Between our mailing list and our social media outreach, we reached over 3,000 people in the state and nationally. That is basically all that I wanted to amend to my summary. If anybody has any questions, I'd be glad to answer them. Is that okay, Kelly?
Thank you, Ms. McFerrin. That will conclude Ms. McFerrin's direct testimony, and she is now prepared to address any questions from the commissioners or parties.
Are there any parties that wish to cross-examination, Ms. McFerrin, based on her written prefiled testimony?
No questions from the Environment Department, but we thank Ms. McFerrin for her testimony.
Mr. Hearing Officer, I have no questions. Thank you.
Are there any commissioners with cross-examination for this witness? Are there any members of the public? Ms. Noakes, may this witness be excused?
Yes, Mr. Hearing Officer.
Would you call your sixth witness, please?
Yes, petitioners would now like to call Ms. Rachel Kahn as a witness. Good morning, Ms. Kahn. Would you please state your name for the record?
Rachel Kahn.
And Ms. Kahn, you prepared testimony for this proceeding, which is exhibit two. Is that correct?
Correct.
And is your testimony accurate to the best of your knowledge?
It is, thank you.
And would you confirm that you are willing to adopt your testimony under oath here today?
Yes, I do.
Thank you. Ms. Kahn has prepared a short PowerPoint presentation summarizing her testimony that we filed with the commission on April 8th, 2022. And Ms. Kahn, please go ahead and proceed with your presentation.
Thank you. Let me just get the presentation up here. Oops. Are you all now able to see?
That looks great, Ms. Kahn. Thank you.
Great. All right, Mr. Hearing Officers, Madam Chair, members of the commission, thank you for the opportunity to testify before you here today. Before I get started and go through this PowerPoint, I'd like to point out that all the photos in this presentation in the PowerPoint that you'll see before you today are of the Pecos, of the Upper Pecos Watershed, with a couple, just a couple of exceptions. And when they aren't, it is noted in the PowerPoint that it isn't of the Upper Pecos Watershed. First off, I will, there we go. First off, I wanted to start with my qualifications. I have worked on water quality issues in New Mexico for 22 years. I have provided trainings on the Clean Water Act, including water quality standards and outstanding waters in particular throughout the state for those 22 years. And I have provided testimony before the Water Quality Control Commission on many occasions, including during the last four triennial reviews and all previous outstanding waters hearings. And my full resume is included as exhibit three. Petitioners exhibit three. For a little overview, for a brief overview of outstanding waters in general, water quality standards include three components: designated uses, criteria, and anti-degradation. And our anti-degradation procedures and policy can be found in our regulations at 20.6.4.8 NMAC, so our New Mexico Water Quality Standard Regulations. Anti-degradation itself has three tiers, has three components, and outstanding waters, outstanding national resource waters, are the third tier. They are the highest level of protection afforded to waters in the state under our surface water quality standards. Once a water is designated as an outstanding water, no degradation is allowed except for short-term degradation associated with restoration and public safety activities. The designation is beneficial to existing uses of the watershed, such as Aseca's, recreation, farming, and ranching. We have three designations to date. We have the, already in the state, we have the Rio Santa Barbara. We have all waters, including wetlands in the Viaductal, and all named perennial waters and wetlands in the U.S. Forest Service Wilderness Areas. I would also like to point out that there are specific provisions in our regulations that exempt Aseca's operations from any new requirements under designation, and also protects existing uses such as ranching. And those can be found at 20.6.4.8A, 3D, and E in our regulations. For a brief overview of our petition, of the petition before you today, you've heard from many of the petitioners already today, and you will hear from a couple more shortly. These petitioners represent a broad range of interest in the Upper Pecos Watershed. In addition, this petition is supported by numerous local and statewide individuals, organizations, and businesses. You just heard from Ms. McFerrin about some of those, some of that support. These people depend on the waters for recreation in the Upper Pecos Watershed. They depend on these waters for their traditional way of life and their livelihoods. And, and, and these people value the remarkable beauty and exceptional ecological and recreational attributes of these waters. I want to point out that the term Upper Pecos Watershed, in my testimony and in this PowerPoint here today, as well as in the petition itself, refers to the nominated streams and wetlands nominated in the petition and identified in maps one and two and tables one and four. And that, those maps and tables can be found in petitioner's exhibit five. Petitioners have satisfied all procedures for this nomination. There are six requirements for nominating an ONRW as set forth in the regulations at 20.6.4.9A and NMAC. And I will go through, in this presentation, I will go through each of those six requirements. The first requirement is a map of, sorry, excuse me. I've been fighting a bit of a cold, so please excuse, my voice cracks a little bit. The first requirement is a map of the nominated surface water of the state, including the location and proposed upstream and downstream boundaries. A map was included in the petition as well as in the petitioner's NOI as exhibit five, as I mentioned before. Here are those maps. On the left, we have a map of the streams, the nominated streams. And on the right, we have a map of the nominated wetlands. We have also provided a table that lists each of the nominated waters. You see, and again, this is also provided in exhibit five as well as in my written testimony on pages nine through 13. In this table, you can see that we name each stream. Each stream is named, the associated miles of those streams, the downstream boundary, the upstream boundary. And then in addition, we provided the latitude and longitude of the mouth of the stream. Over here is the table of the wetlands, and it's the label that's associated on the map, the type of wetland, the acre of wet, the acres of wetland, and the latitude and longitude where those are found. In total, there's 179.93 miles of streams being nominated and 42.96 acres of wetlands. Again, this is just an excerpt of these tables. If you want to see the full tables, please refer to exhibit five. The second requirement is a written statement and evidence based on the scientific principles in support of the nomination, including specific reference to one or more of the applicable ONRW criteria. So this is really where the meat of the nomination comes in, where it's found. And I will come back to this second. I'm going to conclude with going through the criteria as my, part of my presentation today. So I'm going to come back to this second requirement at the end. The third requirement is water quality data, including chemical, physical, or biological parameters, if available, to establish a baseline condition. So this is, I want to point out that the requirement is to provide data if available. And petitioners have provided water quality data in the petition as well as in the NOI. Water quality data can be found in petitioner's exhibit six of the NOI. We provided chemical, field, geomorphology, benthic, fish, temperature data. And again, that can be found in exhibit six of the NOI. The fourth requirement is a discussion of activities that might contribute to the reduction of water quality in the proposed ONRW. There are several activities that could impact water quality. Mining is one of them. More than 40% of stream reaches in western watersheds are contaminated by acid mine drainage and associated heavy metals. Acid mine drainage from mining activities have caused massive fish kills and have poisoned migratory birds at many sites across the west. In addition, development and roads is another activity that could impact water quality. Increased sediment loading from roads and development can cause substantial water quality problems. Pollution from roads and bridges is one of the top two sources of impairment in the state of New Mexico. So it's a So it's a very real problem to our watersheds here in New Mexico. Climate change is another real problem to, to our waters here in New Mexico and the Upper Pecos watershed. The climate change is resulting in warmer temperatures in our streams. That's a really big problem across the state. Temperature is also a problem in the Pecos watershed. And that can lead to, climate change can also lead to more erosion due to the flashier nature of precipitation. So, and healthy watersheds, by contrast, can perform ecosystem services that can help provide resilience and adaptive capacity in the face of climate change, which is why protections like ONRW protections are very important to pursue, so that we can, we can protect the resiliency of our watersheds. Poorly managed recreational use is another threat to water quality across the West, but also specifically in the Upper Pecos watershed. And I'd like to comment briefly on that, based on some, on questions by Commissioner earlier, that yes, it is a big problem across, across the West, especially in the face of the pandemic. And it's not necessarily the case that ONRW protections are not, are not a protection that is the goal of which is to draw more people or to advertise the recreational significance of the area. The goal and the purpose of ONRW protections is to, is to protect those recreational values that are found in our streams in New Mexico. And so the protections will, will be able to ensure that we don't love to death our, our, our special places, like the Upper Pecos. So it puts in, in protections so that, that those impacts can be mitigated and stopped. The fifth requirement is, is any additional evidence to substantiate such a designation, including an analysis of the economic impact of the designation on the local and regional economy within the state of New Mexico and the benefit to the state. Petitioners provided lots of additional information. That's also included in our NOI, including the economic significance, the cultural significance, and the national significance of nominating, of protecting the Upper Pecos watershed as an outstanding water. These, this information really goes towards supporting the criteria for designation. And so I will circle back around on this information when I get to that, that component, that second requirement, which was the written statement in support of the ONRW based on the criteria. The sixth requirement for nomination is an affidavit of publication of notice of the petition in a newspaper of general circulation in the affected counties and in a newspaper of general statewide circulation. As noted, when we requested this hearing in November of 2021, we have, the petitioners have put notice of the petition in Albuquerque Journal, as well as the Las Vegas Optic. And here are the affidavits of publication of notice of the petition. These can be seen in Exhibit 7, Petitioners Exhibit 7. In addition, there are notice requirements for this hearing itself. This State Rules Act requires notice in the New Mexico Register at least 30 days before the hearing. Commissioner's rules require publication of the notice in the New Mexico Register and in a newspaper of local, statewide and local newspaper at least 60 days. So notice of the hearing was published in the New Mexico State Register on January 26, and notice of the hearing was published in Albuquerque Journal on February 5 and in the Las Vegas Optic on February 4. Again, those can be viewed in Petitioners Exhibit 8. So getting back to the meat of the, of the nomination, this number 2, which is the written statement and evidence based on the scientific principles in support of the nomination. I've included here the criteria for designating an outstanding water. This language comes directly from our regulations at 20.6.4.9B and MAC. I've added the emphasis, the "or" and the "and". And so to go through it really briefly here, we have a surf that a water can, is, qualifies to be an outstanding national resource water if, when the Commission determines that the designation is beneficial to the state of New Mexico and, that's the one "and", and the water is a significant attribute of these various already protected areas, like a special trout water or a federal wild and scenic river. And there's several others there as well, as you can see. Or the water has exceptional recreational or ecological significance, or the existing water quality is equal or better than the numeric criteria. And so this, so it's important to realize that you only need to have two, basically, two of these criteria. The first one, the beneficial to the state, and then one of these various other criteria. I'll now go through how the Upper Pecos watershed meets this, these criteria. Petitioners have satisfied the criteria for designation. So all nominated waters meet the benefit to the state criterion. In addition, all nominated waters meet the ecologically significant criterion. And Dr. David Probst, who is testifying later today, will speak to the ecologically significant criterion in a little bit. In addition, all nominated waters meet the recreationally significant criterion. Many of the nominated waters meet the water quality criterion. And some of the nominated waters meet the special attribute criterion. Exhibit 4, Petitioners Exhibit 4 lays out which waters meet which criteria. And here is an excerpt of that exhibit. You can see here on the table, we have listed the, the water body in the first column, and then some information, the stream miles and description about each water body. Then we get into the different criteria in the remaining columns. This first column is the benefit to New Mexico. And as I mentioned in the previous slide, all the nominated waters meet this criterion. And then we have listed the other, other criterion. Where the table is blue, it means that that specific water body has met that criterion. You can see here for the Holy Ghost Creek, Tributaries 1 through 13, that they have met these three criterion, criteria. Some waters meet more than, than three. Again, only two are required, and all of them meet at least three, but some meet more. So for example, down here with Jack's Creek, you can see that there are five criteria have, have been met. Again, that's Exhibit, Petitioners Exhibit 4. And to, and to get into the specifics of each of that criteria, seven miles of the nominated portion of the Pecos River is part of the Pecos Wild and Scenic River. So that means that first special attribute criteria. Several of the nominated waters are special, state special trout waters, including the Pecos River from the Rio Mora Confluence to Cowls and Jack's Creek from the waterfalls downstream, downstream of the New Mexico Highway 63, upstream to, to its headwaters. All of the nominated waters meet the exceptional recreational significance criterion. Annually, thousands of visitors recreate at the seven U.S. Forest Service campgrounds that offer a total of 118 individual sites and three group sites. The Jack's Creek campground is listed as one of the top 10 campgrounds in the state. There are many recreational activities that occur in the Upper Pecos watershed, including camping, hiking, horseback riding, hunting, fishing, bird watching, backpacking, rafting. The list goes on. And here you can see some photos of recreational activities in the watershed. We have someone, a person down here about to go down this little raft bed on the mainstream of the Pecos, and then folks camping in the Upper Pecos watershed. In addition, the Village of Pecos has included in their economic development, development plan how outdoor recreation in the Pecos Canyon is a key component of the local economy. And several local outfitters take folks on tours and trips in the Upper Pecos watershed and depend on the, on the clean waters for their business. And then we get into the recreational significance of the Upper Pecos watershed in terms of its fishing attributes, fishing significance. The waters of the Upper Pecos watershed are renowned for trout fishing. The main stem of the Pecos, the nominated section of the main stem of the Pecos sees 158, over 158,000 angler days per year. This is the second highest fish stream reach in the entire state. Fly fishing guides have named the Upper Pecos number 6 out of 11 of the top-rated best places to fly fish in New Mexico. And this is only increasing. This popularity and recreational significance of fishing in the Upper Pecos watershed is, is, is increasing. So in, between the, the one survey time, which was 2018 to 2019, and the next survey event, which was the 2020 to 2021 survey event done by the New Mexico Department of Game and Fish, the, the main stem saw an increase of over 17,000 anglers. And while fishing on Jack's Creek increased tenfold and over 10% on the Rio Mora in that same period. So this, this, the fishing in the, in the Pecos is, is definitely increasing. And I will note, as I, I spoke to people about testifying before you today, I mentioned it to a number of people recently, that I have heard a number of times, people say, hey, oh, I learned to fish on the Pecos. That's where I learned to fish, or that's where I take my family to go fishing. So this is, this is a well-known and well-loved area for fishing. You can, and to see some of those numbers that I mentioned here, you can look at Petitioners Exhibit 10, which has the angler days. So these waters in the Upper Pecos watershed are home to the Rio Grande Cutthroat Trout, Rainbow Trout, Brown Trout, and Cutthroat Trout. And each of the 16 named waters provides habitat for trout. Here is a list. This is Table 3 in my written testimony, which can be found on page 27 through 28 of my testimony. It lists which species of trout are found in, in each of the, the drainages. In addition, all nominated waters have many species of economic and recreational importance. These are also referred to as SERI. So this information can, again, actually, the information from the last slide about trout, as well as the species information, is from the New Mexico Department of Game and Fish Environmental Review Tool Reports, which can be found in Petitioners Exhibit 9. Those full reports can be found in Petitioners Exhibit 9. And these tables that I've included here are a summary of that information. Again, here is a summary. This is Table 4, and which can be found on page 31 of my written testimony. And again, the source data is from Exhibit 9. So this lists the nominated streams and the species of economic and recreational importance by stream. Now, moving on to the water quality criterion. Seven of the nominated named streams and one segment of the nominated portion of the Pecos River meet or exceed water quality criteria associated with the aquatic life and contact uses. Those seven streams are listed here, and the stretch of the Pecos, there's a portion of the nominated stretch of the Pecos that exceeds, meets water quality standards. And that's Jack's Creek to the headwaters, to the wilderness boundary. This existing water quality data is found in Exhibit 6, where you can find this table, which I provided an excerpt here. Here is, this table includes the, the water body, the nominated water body. It includes, it summarizes the existing uses and which, and when, if there is, some water bodies have it, some don't, cite specific criteria. And then it goes on to summarize the use support and whether it meets, this last column is whether it meets that specific criteria for ONRW designation.
Excuse me, madam witness, you have five minutes.
Thank you. So moving on to the benefit of the state. There are numerous benefits to the state, include supporting a rich tradition of asequia irrigation and farming, supporting ranching, supporting cultural values. There's economic benefits and watershed protection. As you heard from Lieutenant Governor Toya earlier today, the Pecos Pueblo, for generations, depended on the clean water in the Pecos River. And this is very important to HEMES Pueblo today as the ancestors of Pecos Pueblo. There are many asequias and farming and ranching operations that depend on clean water in the Pecos River. Here, there's 55 asequias that divert from the Pecos River. Here you have a picture of some of those farmers and ranchers in the Pecos watershed. Here's a goat farmer and a rancher. And you can see this, you can hear from these folks in videos that were provided as Petitioners Exhibit 17. This is actually Mr. Ralph V. Hill irrigating his field. He is in all of those videos. The second video link provided in Petitioners Exhibit 17, you can hear from, from this goat farmer and from this rancher. So I urge the commissioners to, to check out those videos, to hear, to hear these voices. There are many economic benefits to protecting the Upper Pecos watershed. The nominated, as I mentioned previously, the nominated stretch of the main stem of the Pecos is the second most fished river in the state. In 2013, the New Mexico Department of Game and Fish put together a report documenting the economic benefits of outdoor recreation county by county. And while they didn't parse that data out to be stream-specific in that 2013 report, and so we don't have the Pecos-specific numbers for that report, we do have Pecos-specific numbers for other years that the Department of Game and Fish gathered in a different process through their surveys. And you can see in the report here summarized, there were 118,000 fishing days in that New Mexico Department of Game and Fish report, generating over 6.5 million in spending associated with fishing. There are 116 jobs created from that fishing and hunting activity. And, and while we don't have it for that particular year in 2013, we do have fishing data from other years specific to the Upper Pecos. Again, that's provided in Petitioners Exhibit 10. And you can see that these numbers make up, the, the numbers of the Upper Pecos watershed fishing really makes up the lion's share of fishing in countywide. And we can assume that fishing in the Upper Pecos watershed is a big economic driver for the county. And finally, protecting watersheds is a benefit to the state because of the essential ecosystem functions that watersheds provide, including the Upper Pecos watershed. So these headwater watersheds in, in our state, including the Upper Pecos watershed, provides services like sediment control, flood control. And as I mentioned previously, protecting the Upper Pecos watershed will help provide resiliency in the face of climate change. And so in closing, by protecting the water quality in the nominated waters of the Upper And so in closing, by protecting the water quality in the nominated waters of the upper Pecos watershed, the watershed and the communities and individuals that depend on the, the clean water in the Pecos watershed will benefit, and this in turn will benefit the region and the state as a whole. And again, here is the excerpt of, of exhibit four, which summarizes the, the criteria, which waters meet which criteria. And with that, I will conclude my testimony and stop sharing. There we are, and stand for any cross-examination or questions. Thank you, Ms. Khan.
Are there any cross-examination questions from any party for this witness?
The Environment Department has no cross-examination questions, but thank you, Ms. Khan, for your testimony.
Mr. Hearing Officer, I have no questions. Thank you.
Are there any commissioners who have cross-examination for Ms. Khan?
Mr. Hearing Officer, this is Commissioner Thompson.
Please.
Ms. Khan, thank you. That was a, a great presentation, and I, I have read the nominating petition with some, with some detail. My question is, much of the land in the, in this watershed is owned by and managed by the federal government. And, and some of the examples of degradation that you showed might be attributed to poor management of land, particularly overgrazing, possibly fire management, things like that. So my question is, if, if this petition is adopted by the commission, what is the relationship, what's the regulatory relationship between the state of New Mexico, the Environment Department, and the federal government, principally the, the forest? Thank you.
Commissioner Thompson, thank you for that question. Yes, it's a really good question, and, and there are, there are several things that, that relate to that. First of all, the U.S. Forest Service and the Environment Department have an MOU regarding outstanding water protections that outlines how the, the Forest Service will work with the state to ensure these protections are, are, are implemented. And secondly, the Forest Service, the Santa Fe Forest Service, has mentioned outstanding national resource waters as priority areas for protection in their land management plan. And so it recognized the importance of protecting and implementing these protections, they've, in their new forest plan, in their new Santa Fe National Forest Forest Plan, it, it identifies these areas as, as critical areas for implementing protection and restoration.
Thank you.
Are there other commissioners?
This is Commissioner Brankard.
Commissioner?
Yes, this is more just a sort of a curiosity here, Ms. Khan. Under the criteria for significant attributes, it says the water is a significant attribute of, then it lists several things, and why I'm listing is State Park. Pecos Canyon State Park is located entirely within this area. So I'm curious as to why there's been no mention of that in your testimony or the petition.
Yes, thank you, Commissioner Brankard, for that question. Yes, I, I wanted to include it in my PowerPoint, but I hadn't included it. It was an oversight in the written testimony, and I wasn't sure if I was allowed to add that additional information in my PowerPoint presentation. But there has been, that was a, we're juggling a lot of information, and we neglected to, to include that in the written testimony. And there has been communication with the Pecos Canyon State Park by petitioners. They've, they have indicated their support. And so there, that, and actually, we've been in conversation with, the petitioners have been in conversation, as of high, actually briefly, with, with some of the consultants that the State Park has hired to write their new plan, their new park plan. And so they're, they're very much engaged in, in preparing, if, if the commission decides to designate these waters as ONRWs, they are looking at, at the ways that they can incorporate those protections into their state plan, their, excuse me, their state park plan, or their canyon, the Pecos Canyon plan that they're currently updating right now. Sorry, a little tongue tied there, but I think you got the point.
Thank you.
Commissioner Dominguez?
Yes, thank you, Mr. Hearing Officer. Good morning, Ms. Khan, and thank you for your testimony today.
Good morning.
I have several questions here, and, and some of them are a little bit general in nature, but as you pointed out, you've, you've had vast participation in ONRWs in the past, as, as with maybe a few commissioners, but not very many commissioners. So we have a lot of new commissioners, this is their first round in ONRW. So have some questions that maybe can provide context or perspective for fellow commissioners. So as you've pointed out in your written testimony, under the Clean Water Act, the ONRWs allow for the protection of the state's highest quality, most valued surfaced waters in perpetuity. And the term that gets utilized quite often in here is exceptional. So as a petitioner, how do you determine exceptional versus really good or good waters within this state? So I've never seen anything like clarified on that. So from a petitioner's standpoint, how do you make that clarification on a graduated scale?
So, thank you, Commissioner Dominguez, for that question. Yes, the, the term exceptional is not defined within our state regulations. So there isn't any guidance provided in 20.6.4 specifically about how to make that determination. There is some specifics in the criteria, right? Some of the criteria lays that out, right? So outlines that it, you know, it's waters are considered eligible to be an outstanding, and to be, you know, an exceptional water in our state if they're part of a special attribute, or if the water quality is equal to or better than the, the criteria for aquatic life and contact uses, right? So that, that lays out some of the ways to get at whether a water is outstanding or deserving of these, these protections. In terms of the recreational and ecologically significant attributes, that's really a subjective, you know, there, there is, there is no, you know, objective criteria provided in our regulations to make that determination. And so that is determined through gathering all the information, such as we've done for you today, about how these waters are valued, both by, by the local community as well as statewide value to the state, to make the determination. For example, the Pecos, the stretch of the upper Pecos is the second most fish street, stream, stream reach in the state. So that, I think, goes to the exceptional recreational values of, of the nominated water. In addition, the petition, as well as the, the witnesses before you today, identify some of the species that are found in these waters that are important and significant to the state as a whole, both economically and recreationally, as well as species that are on the endangered species list or are identified as state endangered. So those are some of the ways that, that we have put before, before you today to make the case that the waters of the upper Pecos are exceptional and outstanding and deserving of this important protection.
Okay, thank you, Ms. Khan. Kind of switching gears here, you, you talked about some of the various problems that could cause degradation, and one of them being wildfire. And since we're right in the middle of the start of wildfire season, well, this, this kind of prompted a thought in my mind. And this particular area has had some adverse impacts from wildfire. So with that said, and I think you've alluded to some capabilities within the anti-degradation policy, one of them being the emergency response actions within that. Can you give us a little bit of perspective from a response to wildfire activities? Does the designation of an ONRW limit the tools that fire response agencies have or could utilize, or how they respond to wildfires within an ONRW designation?
Commissioner Dominguez, again, a really good question. And, and as you pointed out, our regulations at 20.6.4.8.3C. So again, that's 20.6.4.8A3C. I think I forgot the A in the first time I said that. So it's 20.6.4.8AC, A3C. There's a lot there, getting down to the, the specifics. Is where it outlines emergency actions and how emergency response actions are allowed without any notice or without any procedures in designated ONRWs when those responses are necessary for, to, to protect public health and safety. So an emergency response action like firefighting can occur without any additional requirements in the near term after that, that, in an ONRW. After that action has taken, then there are some follow-up requirements of notice and accounting of what those actions were after, after the fact. So thank you. I think it's a really important and really good provision that we have in our state regulations for emergency response.
Okay, and to elaborate on that a little further, so, so the use of a product such as slurry from air drops would not be precluded in firefighting activities?
No, the, I, if the use of such slurry is, is necessary to mitigate a threat to public health or safety, the emergency response action may proceed prior to providing notification in an outstanding national resource water.
Okay, very good. Thank you. And then kind of switching gears again, in your written testimony, you've, you've kind of referenced the fact that hard rock mining has occurred in the upper Pecos. And, and then your written testimony goes on to say, and could occur in the future. So are you indicating there that, I'm assuming there's probably entities that have potentially mineral rights in the area? And to getting to my questions, then, if, if an entity does have mineral rights and chooses to execute them, does the designation of an ONRW reclude that entity in their use of mineral rights?
So outstanding water protections don't prohibit activities. It's not about stopping specific activities. The outstanding waters protections is about protecting water quality and stopping degradation. So any activity can, can occur in a designated watershed, as long as that activity is not causing pollution of the river.
Okay, thank you for that clarification. I think, I think that's an important item. And not to disappoint you, but I think that ends my lineup question. Thank you, Mr. Hearing Officer, thank you, Ms. Khan.
Thank you, Commissioner Dominguez. Are there any other commissioners before we move to public members?
Mr. Hearing Officer, this is Commissioner Patton.
Please.
Thank you, Ms. Khan, for your testimony. I've got just a couple of questions. And the first is related to overlap between poorly, I think of the words were used, poorly managed recreational activities and the water quality standards. I guess, could you explain, if that were identified, how the water quality standards would apply to those activities, or, and what those activities may be?
Thank you, Commissioner Patton, for that question. Yes, so the water quality standards apply to, to all activities, right, that occur in a watershed in a way, right? Because, you know, nothing can, can, especially in an outstanding water, once a water is designated as an outstanding water, no, no activities can cause pollution, as I just mentioned in previous, in response to a previous question. And so you could have recreational activities with, occurring that are causing degradation of water quality standards, say E. coli, or erosion, sediment loading in a river related to recreational, poorly managed recreational use. And the goal would be to, would be to implement best management practices to stop those, those types of degradation from reaching the, the river. And this designation provides the additional strength and incentive and requirement, really, of our public land management agencies and state land management agencies to implement those best management practices. And, and also can be used as an incentive for restoration, as is outlined in, the forest management plans have identified outstanding waters, both in the Carson and the Santa Fe, as areas that are priority for receiving restoration and, and protection projects, similar projects similar to the ones that the Upper Pecos Watershed Alliance is currently implementing in the watershed. So all of those things can, can go together to create stronger protections and stronger response to increased recreation use in a designated water body.
Okay, thank you. I guess the next question is related to the statement early on in your testimony about temporary degradation, temporary short-term degradation. And I just want to make sure I, I understand what this, this proposal, if it, if it is approved, would, how it would affect some activities up there, such as in-stream habitat restoration, others like upland habitat restoration for wildlife, controlled burns, those types of activities. Would they still be permitted?
So outstanding water protections do not prohibit short-term degradation associated with restoration activities. You can see those provisions in the regulations at 20.6.4.8A three, A4. A4 is the is where those that provision is outlined, that restoration activities that that short term degradation associated with restoration activities is is allowed.
Okay. And then I guess, you know, it's it's great to see the Rio Grande Cutthroat Trout mentioned throughout the petition. The the department has been working for a long time restoring that species to the Upper Pecos watershed. And we have ongoing activities to do the same in the in the near future. Do you believe that this designation would have any effect on the ability to use a Pisacide in the Upper Pecos watershed as provided for in the water quality standards?
So I know that there's been Pisacide, I always say Pisacide, is it Pisacide? Is that the correct pronunciation? And so there has been applications of Pisacide in in the Viadoll, the waters of the Viadoll, which are currently outstanding waters. So this, and again, that would be considered a restoration activity and would be allowed under that same provision that I mentioned before.
Are there any other commissioners?
Mr. Hearing Officer, Commissioner Dominguez with a follow up.
Please.
Ms. Khan, I know a follow up question from Commissioner Patton, where he was talking about the the short term short term degradation that that may or may not be allowed. Well, you alluded to A4A. And underneath that, provide us some perspective there for those short term, potential short term degradations, those activities have to be reviewed by the Environment Department. And I'm not for sure if any of them have to come before the commission, but there's technically an approval process for that. Is that correct?
Well, there's actually, if you look at it, actually, there are, there's a review requirement for all surface waters of the state for degradation associated with restoration. So if you look at A, that's for restoration projects in outstanding waters. If you look at B, for surface waters of the state, other than ONRWs, the department shall review on a case by case basis discharges that may result in degradation from restoration. So and so it both ONRWs as well as non ONRWs have a review process outlined in in the in the standards. In terms of, it is, I believe, in terms of some of the restoration activities that require that have occurred in outstanding waters that we already have designated in the state, specifically in the Viadoll, where there's a lot of restoration activities ongoing, supported by lots of of agencies as well as NGO partners, that there is a 401 process usually associated with those restoration activities and the outstanding water designation is has been included in that 401 permitting process and approval has been included there for for restoration activities.
Okay, thank you, Ms. Ms. Khan. And and not to have put you on the spot with this one, this question may may be best suited to be pointed to the witnesses for Environment Department for further clarification. So and just from my perspective, I pronounce it Pisacide also. Country Commissioner Patton.
Thank you, Commissioner Dominguez.
Are there any other? Thank you, Commissioner Dominguez. Are there any other commissioners who have cross examination for Ms. Khan? Are there any members of the public who wish to cross examine Ms. Khan? Ms. Noakes, may this witness be excused?
Yes, Mr. Hearing Officer. Thank you.
And I think this would be a good time to take a 10 minute break before we come back for your seventh witness. So it is now 11:36. Let's come back at 11:46. We are taking public comments at about noon today. Ms. Jones, is there any, are there any public members who have signed up for comment?
Not at this point, Mr. Hearing Officer.
Okay, we'll be back on the record at 10, excuse me, 11:46. Thank you. It's 11, excuse me, it's 11:46. We're back on the record. Ms. Adagene, are you there?
Just one second. Let me just get in position. Okay.
Ms. Noakes? Are you ready to call your seventh witness?
Thank you, Mr. Hearing Officer. Yes, we will be calling Mr. Toner Mitchell next to the stand. Thank you, Mr. Mitchell. Will you please state your name for the record?
My name is Toner Mitchell.
And Mr. Mitchell, what is your educational background?
I have a Bachelor of Arts from Williams College and a Master's in Fine Arts from St. Mary's College.
Thank you. And Mr. Mitchell, will you please describe your work experience?
My work experience ranges from a an environmental science scientist working on hazardous waste sites, fishing guide, and currently I work with Trout Unlimited in a conservation capacity.
Thank you. And is petitioner's exhibit 14 an accurate copy of your resume?
Yes, it is.
And Mr. Mitchell, you prepared testimony for this proceeding, which is exhibit 13. Is that correct?
Yes.
And is your testimony accurate to the best of your knowledge?
It is.
And are you willing to confirm today that you will adopt your your testimony under full, under under oath?
Yes.
Thank you. Mr. Mitchell has prepared a short summary of his testimony. And so please proceed with your presentation, Mr. Mitchell.
Thank you very much. And thank you to the Hearing Officer and and members of the Commission. I I, since my testimony is going to be entered already, I would like to put some finer points on on some of the things that I mentioned in that testimony. Instead of reading it verbatim, I I wanted to put some finer points on the economic value of the Pecos watershed. And I think it's important to understand, and this, for this, I'm wearing my fishing guide hat. I guided the Pecos for many years. And as a manager of a fly fishing business in Santa Fe, I think it's important to understand that in addition to the economic value to the communities in the Pecos watershed itself, that the economic value to adjacent communities like Santa Fe and Albuquerque, very urban communities, the the value of the Pecos to those communities is extremely significant in that the activity generated on fishing in the Pecos results in hotel sales, restaurant reservations, businesses might locate conferences in those towns. There are real estate values to those communities as well. So it's very important that the economic value of the Pecos ripples out. It also ripples statewide. And my fishing business, I think on an annual basis, we would sell tens of thousands of dollars in fishing licenses to mainly out of state visitors. And thus, that money would go to the State Game and Fish Department, which had the ability to leverage those license revenues on a federal level many times three, three times over. So the value of the Pecos River in terms of drawing in revenue to this state for many, many different uses cannot be overestimated. And it also is a great reason to protect the stream in in any way possible, protect the watershed. The second emphasis I would like to raise is there's been, and this is as a Water and Habitat Director for Trout Unlimited, many times we've heard the mention of the Rio Grande Cutthroat Trout. That is the New Mexico state fish. And as Commissioner Patton mentioned, there are lots of efforts to restore that fish to its former standing. Right now, the fish is not endangered, but there the necessity of recovering it is mainly to ensure that it won't become endangered federally. Federally endangered species require certain changes in land use, which would be a threat to the economic and recreational value of the Pecos. Also, with regard to the Cutthroat Trout, it needs to be mentioned that there is a strain of this fish that is absolutely unique to the Pecos watershed for further warranting its protection as an outstanding natural resource water. And finally, much has been said about the recreational, heavy recreational use on the Pecos as kind of, you know, supporting an economy and such. I, from a Trout Unlimited perspective, we also recognize this heavy recreational use as a potential threat to the quality and function of this river. Therefore, the outstanding natural resource designation is completely appropriate to to this river, its watershed, under these conditions. And with that, I will end my presentation.
Thank you, Mr. Mitchell. That will conclude Mr. Mitchell's direct testimony. And he will now stand for questions, cross examination from the parties, and questions from the commissioners.
Is there a party that wishes to cross examine this witness?
No questions from the Environment Department, Mr. Hearing Officer. Thank you, Mr. Mitchell.
Mr. Hearing Officer, I have no questions. Thank you.
Is there a commissioner that wishes to cross examine this witness? Is there a member of the public that wishes to cross examine this witness?
Yes, this is Lila McFerrin with Upright. I just wanted to comment on a couple of things.
Okay, hold on one second. You were a witness earlier, weren't you?
That's correct.
Okay, so this, at this time, we're taking cross examination from the public. It's not an opportunity to further testify.
No, it was comments to what has been testified to.
Ms. McFerrin, let me be specific. Cross examination is very specific. It's questions based on the subject matter that was just testified to, or in this case, entered as prefiled technical testimony in full written terms. So if you have a question, but not an opportunity to testify. No, okay, thank you.
It was strictly a public comment, but it can wait for the more appropriate time. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Would you have public comment coming up at noon? So there's no reason why you couldn't make a public comment. Are there any members of the public who wish to cross examine this witness? No. Ms. Noakes, may this witness be excused?
Yes, thank you, Mr. Hearing Officer.
All right. It's 11:54, and I would like to check in with Ms. Jones again. Have any members of the public signed up to make comment?
No, they have not. Although Ms. McFerrin might want to make her comment at the appropriate time.
She may. And Ms. McFerrin, if you want to use the chat feature below to send the host a message, you're more than welcome to.
I will be glad to do that. Thank you.
Okay, well, Ms. McFerrin, we don't need to stand on ceremony. Would you like to make a public comment at this time?
Yes, I would. Thank you, Mr. Hearing Officer.
Okay. Would you spell your name for the court reporter?
Of course. Lila is L.E.L.A. Last name McFerrin, M.C.F.E.R.R.I.N.
And Ms. McFerrin, were you sworn in earlier?
Yes, I was.
Okay, Ms. McFerrin, you have up to five minutes, and your comment should be general, non technical in nature. Please proceed.
Okay, the first is to Ms. Jones, to Pamela. Pam, there are two of our Upright board members who would like to make public comments. And we obviously didn't realize that we had to register that with you. So I am now registering Dr. Jennifer Lindline and Carol Johnson to make public comments either today at noon or today at 5 o'clock, depending on their schedule. And I see Dr. Lindline has joined the hearing, so she is available. The next one was on the I'm sorry?
I just said thank you. I've noted the name.
Thank you. On the issue of restoration projects being short term degradation and allowed under the ONRW designation, that is what Upright does. And I can tell you and thank the agencies involved, starting with the Forest Service, the Surface Water Quality Bureau, Environment Department, who actually give us those grants on how strict they manage the health and safety and quality of water issues, water quality issues when we do projects. They are on top of it from the time we get the grant, we meet with them, we meet with them prior to construction, we meet with them during and after construction, and then we monitor that area for two years. So they are doing a hell of a job. The other one is on the Rio Grande Cutthroat Trout, our native fish. We have watched over the last, especially the last five to 10 years, game and fish doing a superb job on bringing back that strain. And the Pecos strain being worked on at the fish hatchery here in Pecos, Liz Boyce Springs Fish Hatchery. And I'd just like to give a shout out to Kirk Patton, his crew, game and fish, Environment Department, for what they do. They also work with our grants on river stewards grants done by the State Environment Department. We have three of those going now. And again, the oversight and the administration of those grant projects are impeccable. So we're just another shout out to them. And that's all I have to say. Thank you, Mr. Hearing Officer, and thank you, Commissioners and Madam Chairman.
Thank you. So once again, I'd like to announce that if anyone would like to make public comment, there is a chat feature at the bottom of the screen on the right. It says chat. Just click on it and send the host, Pamela Jones, your name, your affiliation, if there is one, and we will put you on a list to make a public comment. Ms. Jones, who is the next public commenter?
Jennifer Lindline.
If you want to make a public comment, Ms. Lindline, please turn on your camera so you can be sworn in.
It is on.
Maybe your
Yes, okay.
There we go. Ms. Adagene, would you swear in Ms. Lindline after she spells her name?
My name is Jennifer Lindline, L.I.N.D.L.I.N.E.
If you would, raise your right hand, please.
If you would, raise your right hand, please. You solemnly swear or affirm the testimony you will give will be the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth.
I do. I swear.
Thank you.
Please proceed.
Hello, thank you for this opportunity to speak, to speak to the group today. My name is Jennifer Lindline. I am a 23-year resident in New Mexico, a 20-year resident in Pecos, New Mexico. Can't call myself a native, but I think I can call myself a local. My husband and I were drawn to the state and especially drawn to Pecos because of its just incredible beauty. We chose to buy our first home, our only home, and raise our daughters in Pecos, New Mexico, largely because of the river, its beauty, its, it's just natural wonders. It's one of the most beautiful and most special places that Bill and I were ever blessed to visit. The sounds along the Pecos River, the sounds of water flowing, of aspen quaking in the fall and of birds singing. It just brings joy to my heart. The smells of the wet earth, of the pine forests, and just of the spring waters lift my spirits. And then just all the sights, the rocky landscapes, the pine forests, all of the colors, it just soothes my soul. We raised our daughters, who are now 15 and 18, in Pecos and spent all of our weekends, all of our breaks, along the river's banks or along the hiking trails. We spent every mother, Mother's Day, under a tree, opening presents, enjoying each other, and just communing with nature and being a family. My daughters worked the fields with Mr. Vehil, who I understand testified a little earlier at Melina de la Isla Organics, picking lettuce, helping with the irrigation lines, and just, and learning the ins and outs of an organic farm. I am a board member with the Upper Pecos Watershed Association, and I'm also a geology professor in the Natural Resources Management Department at New Mexico Highlands University. I regularly bring students up the canyon to experience and learn about the area's geologic history and its natural history. Recently, I mentored two 17-month water quality study of the Upper Pecos River, both of whom were from the Dinay, the Dinay tribe. They just were so impressed by the area. It confirmed their aspirations to achieve a environmental geology degree. And both are continuing to pursue master's degrees so that they can practice being water resources scientists and protectors of our state's waters. I just implore the decision-makers here today that the Upper Pecos River deserves, it demands protections against degradations and the designation that we seek. Thank you.
Ms. Jones, do you have anyone else?
Yes, sir. Carol Johnson.
Ms. Johnson? Let's come back to Ms. Johnson. I don't see her.
She, she's on.
She is?
Yeah, yes, sir. Ms. Johnson, could you turn your camera on, please?
I'm not sure how to do that. I'm very, very sorry. It is not coming on.
Okay, Ms. Johnson, we'll come back to you. You'll be our next public commenter. And when you do manage to figure out your camera, just use the chat feature. And as soon as we get a break in the testimony, we'll bring you back on for your public comment. Okay, Ms. Noakes. It's my understanding that seven of your...
I'm on.
Okay, Ms. Johnson, hold on just a moment, okay? Ms. Noakes, it's my understanding that seven of your nine witnesses have testified so far.
That is correct.
When do you anticipate a witness, Garcia and Probst, will be available this afternoon?
They should be ready by 1:00 PM this afternoon.
Okay, all right. Thank you. Before we turn to the Environment Department and their witnesses, Ms. Johnson, please spell your name and be sworn in.
Thank you. Carol Johnson, J-O-H-N-S-O-N.
Would you raise your right hand, please? You solemnly swear or affirm the testimony you will give will be the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth.
I do.
Thank you.
Okay. Begin.
Please proceed.
I too moved here 26 years ago to Glorieta because of the Pecos River, the watershed, and the wilderness. Excuse me? Can you hear me? I can't hear you.
We can hear you.
Oh, okay. So, the, the Pecos River has been a treasure to indigenous and local people for centuries. It is time for us to be part of the ONRW and to protect its waters from pollution, which is increasingly threatening its water and the watershed. We believe that the ONRW was intended to provide this protection. The river is critical not only to the village of Pecos for farming, vibrant tourism, and recreation like fishing, hunting, hiking, family enjoyment, horseback riding, and many more. It is valued by the entire state of New Mexico and across the entire United States. It is important that New Mexico, as a water-poor state, second only to Nevada in the amount of moisture we get every year. We must protect and preserve the rivers that we have and the wildlife and the people who depend on it. Rivers across our country are dammed and polluted. People are using more water than rivers can provide, while some communities don't even have clean access to water. But the most, the most important threat of all, climate change, is putting the places that make us happy and our health at risk. In short, rivers are essential for wildlife and people. And in this time of climate change, we must keep our rivers alive and clean. Thank you.
Here we have a Ms. Tiffany Rivera, who wishes to make a public comment.
Sir, I am on the line. Can you hear me?
Yes, but... Are you able to turn on your camera? Oh, there you are. Would you spell your name, please?
Yes, my first name is Tiffany, T-I-F-F-A-N-Y, last name Rivera, R-I-V-E-R-A.
Ms. Adagene?
Would you raise your right hand, please? You solemnly swear or affirm the testimony you will give will be the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth.
Yes, ma'am.
Thank you.
Please proceed.
Thank you. I come before you all this afternoon on behalf of New Mexico Farm and Livestock Bureau. We are the largest agriculture organization in the state, representing over more than 20,000 members involved in agriculture, including components of dairy, livestock, fruits, and vegetables. We are a grassroots organization, which represents the interests of our members, specifically at the local, state, and national level. This afternoon, we respectfully oppose the proposal submitted by the petitioners to designate portions of the Pecos River as an outstanding national water resource. New Mexico Farm and Livestock Bureau adamantly opposes these designations as they have the potential to severely limit economic growth while also placing additional restrictions and regulations on water and land use. In a state as dry and arid as New Mexico, continued access and use of our water and land is imperative. And additionally, we oppose the proposal as it includes designated segments located on private land. And New Mexico Farm and Livestock Bureau is an adamant supporter of an individual's private property rights. And this proposal has the potential to infringe on those rights. I did also submit our full comment to Mrs. Pamela Jones through the email option as well. So, the commissioners may find the full comment there. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, Ms. Jones?
No one else at this point, Mr. Hearing Officer.
Thank you. Okay, now we turn to Mr. Verhul.
Yes, Mr. Hearing Officer. Would you like me to proceed with an opening statement and examination of witnesses?
I would, thank you.
Very briefly, the New Mexico Environment Department is a stakeholder in any rulemaking involving the standards and regulations in 20.6.4 New Mexico Administrative Code. And that's why we've entered an appearance in this proceeding and are participating today. Two of our staff members from our standards team have been working collaboratively with the petitioners, as Ms. Noakes noted in her opening statement, in order to further refine and improve this petition to the point where the Environment Department is hopeful that the commission chooses to, in fact, designate the waters that were nominated as outstanding national resource waters. With that said, Mr. Hearing Officer, I have one preliminary request before I call my first witness. Given the, the technical complexity of the testimony of both of my witnesses, I'm requesting that they be able to each provide a summary of their direct testimony and then sit as a panel for cross-examination.
By all means.
Thank you, Mr. Hearing Officer. With that, the New Mexico Environment Department calls Jennifer Fulham.
And Mr. Verhul, would you remind me, are both of your witnesses sworn in?
They are, Mr. Hearing Officer.
Okay, thank you.
Good afternoon, Ms. Fulham. Please state your name.
Jennifer Fulham.
What is your current position?
I'm an environmental scientist supervisor serving as the Water Quality Standards Coordinator with the New Mexico Environment Department's Surface Water Quality Bureau.
How long have you held this position?
I've been the Water Quality Standards Coordinator for five years.
And what, what are your duties in this position?
Well, as a standards coordinator, I oversee and facilitate the department's team responsible for proposing amendments to the state's surface water quality standards, as well as participating in hearings related to any proposed amendments initiated by parties other than the department.
Would you please summarize your post-high school education?
Yeah. I have a Bachelor of Science degree in Biology with a minor in Geography from the University of New Mexico and a Master of Science degree in Environmental Science and Management from New Mexico Highlands University.
Do you hold any certifications or do you have any other professional training that's relevant to this proceeding?
Yes. I've received training and obtained various certifications applicable to both my position and more specifically to this proceeding. A full list of my training and certifications can be found in my resume filed as NMD Exhibit 3.
Can you tell us about your work experience that's relevant to this ONRW proceeding before the commission?
I can't. I've testified and filed amended rules in one tribal and four state water quality standard rulemaking hearings. This included the 2005 triennial review of Tsukki Pabu's water quality standards, state-designated use amendments for Dog Canyon, Takealote Creek, San Asitro Royal, and Tributaries San Asitro Royal, and the state's first discharger-specific temporary standard for Doggett Creek and the city of Raton wastewater treatment plant. And then, most recently, the genders.
Excuse me, you cut out a little bit, the last sentence, please.
Let's see, I'll start off with the...
And then, most recently?
And then, most recently, the triennial review of New Mexico's water quality standards.
Thank you.
Ms. Fulham, have you reviewed the petition and direct technical testimony filed by petitioners and filed by Dennis Quillen?
Yes.
Did you submit technical testimony in this matter?
Yes, my direct technical testimony was filed as NMD Exhibit 1.
Do you have any changes or corrections to that testimony?
No.
Do you adopt that prefiled written technical testimony here today?
I do.
Can you briefly describe the proposed amendments to the state's standards for interstate and interstate surface waters that are being considered here today?
Yeah. The proposed amendments, if adopted, would designate certain identified ephemeral, intermittent, and perennial waters, including wetlands within the Upper Pecos watershed from Dalton Creek Day Use Area upstream to the wilderness boundary as outstanding national resource waters, or otherwise referred to as ONRWs.
Can you tell us what an ONRW is?
An ONRW is a designation for a water of the state in which the highest level of anti-degradation protection applies.
Can any water be designated as an ONRW?
No. For a water to be adopted as an ONRW, the commission must determine whether the petitioners demonstrated that the designation would be one beneficial to the state and that the nominated water body meets one of those eligibility criteria codified in 20.6.4.9B and MAC.
So what protections are afforded to ONRWs?
Well, under the state's anti-degradation policy in 20.6.4.8 and MAC, no degradation of water quality is permitted for a water designated as an ONRW.
Does the designation of a water as an ONRW change the water quality standards for that particular surface water?
No. The act of designating a water of the state as an ONRW doesn't change the designated uses or the criteria. The designation of an ONRW only changes the water quality protections under the state's anti-degradation policy.
Can you explain the state's anti-degradation policy?
Yeah, the anti-degradation policy is found in 20.6.4.8 and MAC, consists of three tiers of protection. Tier one is applicable to all waters of the state and ensures that existing uses and the level of water quality necessary to protect those existing uses are maintained and protected. Tier two protects and maintains high-quality waters by prohibiting any lowering of water quality unless it's determined to be important for economic or social needs in the area in which the water is located. Tier three is the most protective tier, and that prohibits degradation in ONRWs except for specifically defining time-sensitive activities, such as activities that restore or maintain water quality or activities deemed necessary to accommodate public health or safety.
So if the anti-degradation...
Excuse me, would you please repeat the question? I lost your volume.
I apologize. If the anti-degradation policy prohibits the degradation of waters designated as ONRWs, are there any activities permitted on or near an ONRW?
Yes. There are several potential activities that are allowed on or near ONRWs with certain constraints. If it's demonstrated that the activity will not cause degradation to a surface water quality of the ONRW, then the activity is completely permissible. On the other hand, activities that may cause degradation of ONRWs, those need further evaluation and administrative consideration, which is described in 20.6.4.8A3 and 4NMAC. So these activities include those associated with public health and safety, an emergency response, a SECA operation, maintenance and repair, and pre-existing activities, and activities associated with the restoration of the chemical, physical, and biological integrity of the water.
Once adopted, can an ONRW designation be removed?
Well, ONRWs are codified on 20.6.4NMAC. And to date, New Mexico has not removed any ONRW designations. And it would be unlikely for this to happen in the future. But if it were to be considered, it would have to be done through a rulemaking action before the, before this commission and subsequently approved by EP. and subsequently approved by EPA. So as provided in Section 74-6-4D of the State's Water Quality Act, New Mexico Legislature designated the authority to the Commission to quote "adopt water quality standards for surface and groundwater of the state based on credible scientific data and other evidence appropriate under the Water Quality Act." Therefore, amending water quality standards to be less protective, as would be the case in reducing anti-degradation policy requirements for an ONRW, that would require significant reasoning based on sound evidence. So although it's not prohibited anywhere in the federal or state regulations, it would be challenging to demonstrate that an ONRW designation should be removed.
And is designated waters as ONRWs, is that supportive of the goals of the Federal Clean Water Act?
Yes, it's in line with the goals and objectives of the Clean Water Act to restore, maintain, and protect water quality wherever attainable. So ultimate goal of the Act is to bring the water quality of all waters of the US to their highest attainable use, and the designating waters as ONRWs, that's one pool that we can use to work towards that goal.
Thank you. I want to move along just briefly to the administrative process required here in order for these waters to be designated. Does the department consider itself a stakeholder in this matter?
Yes, the department considers itself a stakeholder in this matter based on the department's responsibility for implementing the state's water quality standards. The department also considers EPA a stakeholder as well, since it's EPA's obligation to ensure the state's water quality standards are adopted in accordance with the Clean Water Act.
And has there been contact or communication between the petitioners here today and the Environment Department concerning this nomination?
Yes, the petitioners have been in contact with the department during the development of their petition and in preparation of the hearing.
And what are the notice requirements for this rulemaking hearing?
Well, in accordance with 20.1.6.201 and MAC, the petitioner must publish the hearing notice in the state register and in a newspaper of general circulation in the area affected at least 60 days prior to the hearing. In addition to these requirements, there are also public notification requirements found in 40 CFR 25.5 and in Chapter 14, Article 4 of the State Rules Act. I referenced the relative citations for public noticing in my direct technical testimony, which was filed as NMED Exhibit 1.
For this particular rulemaking proceeding, who provided the public notice?
Well, as outlined in the Hearing Officer's Scheduling Order issued on December 13, 2021, the department provided the public hearing notice for this matter.
And can you describe the actions that the department took? Ms. Fulham, can you hear me? Mr. Hearing Officer, can you hear me? Okay. Ms. Fulham, I don't know if you can hear me. You are frozen on the screen. Can you hear me now? Okay, I'm gonna
I can hear you.
Okay, thank you. I'm gonna go back and re-ask the question that I just asked. I don't know if you were speaking, but we didn't hear any answer at all, so I'm just gonna re-ask it. With respect to providing public notice for this hearing, can you describe the actions that the department took?
Yes, as required in 20.1.6.201A, the hearing notice must be published in the state register, a newspaper of general circulation, and a newspaper of local circulation, no less than 60 days prior to the hearing. Can you still hear me?
Yes.
Good. For this matter, that date was February 11, 2022. In addition to the requirements in 20.1.6.201A and MAC, the department also provided notice to the public at least 30 days prior to the hearing in accordance with Section 14-4-5.2 of the State Rules Act. As detailed in my technical testimony, the department published the hearing notice in English and Spanish in the state register, the Las Vegas Optic, the Albuquerque Journal, all prior to that 60-day hearing requirement. In addition, the department provided notification to the agency's district managers, posted the notice in several places on the department's webpage, emailed the notice to 1901 individuals subscribed to the Surface Water Quality Bureau's email distribution list, posted the notice on the Sunshine Portal, and provided the notice to the Legislative Council Service. And then finally, in accordance with Section 14-4A-4, the Small Business Regulatory Relief Act, the department's tribal communication and cooperation policy, the department provided notification of the proposed amendments to the Small Business Regulatory Advisory Commission and tribal representatives.
So did the department fulfill the regulatory requirements associated with this rulemaking?
To the best of my knowledge, yes.
And did the department file its notice of intent to present technical testimony as Order 2 in the Hearing Officer's Scheduling Order?
Yes, the department filed its notice of intent to present technical testimony, which included direct written testimony and supporting exhibits on March 10, 2022.
And how long does the administrative process take from the point, assuming that they do, from the point where the Commission decides to designate these waters to the point where any changes to the rule would become effective for the purposes of the Federal Clean Water Act?
The administrative process following the Commission's final order and statement of reasons, that takes about six months. The process usually, it includes filing the state records center and archives, and then submitting it to EPA for approval. The rule becomes effective for state purposes under the New Mexico Water Quality Act once the designations are codified in 20.6.4 and MAC, which is typically within two months from the Commission's final statement of reasons and approval order. The rule becomes effective for purposes of the Clean Water Act on EPA's approval date, which comes after that.
The proposed amendments to 20.6.4, which were filed as NMED Exhibit 36 and Petitioners Exhibit 1, identify a document titled "Maps and Lists for Unnamed Tributaries to Perennial Waters and Wetlands in the Headwaters-Pecos River Watershed." Has this document been created and filed with the state library?
No, the department will create the document to reflect the WQCC's determination should some or all of these waters be adopted as ONRWs, and then we'll file it with the state library.
Those two exhibits I just referenced, the department's Exhibit 36 and Petitioners Exhibit 1, those were both the proposed amendments to 20.6.4 and MAC. Are those the same to the best of your knowledge?
Yes.
Does the department fully support the designation of the waters identified in the petition?
Yes.
Okay, thank you, Ms. Fulham. I have no further questions. And the Hearing Officers allowing me to examine both witnesses, at this time, the Environment Department calls Diana Aranda. Let's see, there she is. And Mr. Hearing Officer, Ms. Aranda has been sworn. Ms. Aranda, please state your name.
My name is Diana Aranda, and can you hear me, everybody?
I can hear you.
Perfect.
What is your current position?
I am an environmental scientist advancing the standards planning and reporting team for the New Mexico Environment Department's Surface Water Quality Bureau.
How long have you held this position?
I have been in this position for three years, and I have been employed with the NMED Surface Water Quality Bureau since February 2017.
And briefly, what are your duties in this position?
I am responsible for developing water quality standards for the New Mexico surface waters in accordance to the State Water Quality Act and the Federal Clean Water Act. I write and review documents for the development and revisions to the state's surface water quality standards for the Water Quality Control Commission and the US Environmental Protection Agency's approval process.
Would you please summarize your education?
I hold a Bachelor of Science degree in biology from the University of New Mexico and a Master of Science degree in coastal zone management from Nova Southeastern University.
What certifications and professional training do you have that are relevant to this proceeding?
I have received certifications from EPA's National Water Quality Standards Academy and EPA Quality Project and Project Management. I have attended the state's rulemaking training, as well as their records and information management training.
And what professional experience do you have that's relevant to this proceeding?
I have testified before with the Water Quality Control Commission regarding the triennial review of the state's standards for interstate and interstate surface waters codified in 20.6.4 New Mexico Administrative Code, otherwise referred as NMAC, and for the adoption of total maximum daily loads. I provided the details of my job duties in my resume filed as NMED Exhibit 4.
I'm sorry, did you say Exhibit 4?
Exhibit 4.
Great. Have you reviewed the petition and also the direct technical testimony that's filed by the petitioners and the testimony filed by Mr. McQuillan?
I had a hard time hearing you.
Okay.
Repeat the question.
I will repeat the question. Have you reviewed the petition and the direct technical testimony that was filed by the petitioners and also the testimony filed by Mr. McQuillan in this matter?
Yes.
Okay, and did you submit direct written technical testimony for this matter?
Yes, my direct written technical testimony is filed as NMED Exhibit 2.
Do you have any changes or corrections to that testimony?
I do not.
Do you adopt that prefiled written testimony here today?
Yes, I do.
Okay, and I know that you filed, or exhibits were filed, that were related to your written testimony. Would you summarize the nature of your testimony here today?
I will summarize the department's technical review of the petitioner's proposal to amend 20.6.4.9D to designate certain waters of the upper Pecos as ONRWs. So NMED's technical review evaluated each of the nominated water bodies to ascertain the fulfillment of eligibility criteria and the submittal elements required for an ONRW designation in accordance to 20.6.4.9A and B and MAC. And the full details of this technical review can be found in my direct written technical testimony filed as NMED Exhibit 2.
Okay, well, let's talk a little bit more in detail about the technical review. Can you describe how you conducted that technical review?
The department examined the petition in its entirety. Then we completed a focused review to ascertain whether the petition provided evidence and documentation to satisfy the ONRW eligibility criteria and submittal requirements for 20.6.4.9A and B and MAC for each of the nominated water body.
In your written, direct testimony, you first addressed the ONRW eligibility requirements in 20.6.4.9B and MAC. What was the rationale for starting with that?
Well, the department first reviewed the eligibility criteria in 20.6.4.9B and MAC because if a nominated water body does not meet the eligibility criteria, then the water body would not qualify for an ONRW designation, and NMED would not continue the review of that water body under this ONRW nomination.
Okay, so what are the eligibility criteria in 20.6.4.9B?
So according to 20.6.4.9B and MAC, the Commission may designate a surface water of the state as an ONRW if the designation is beneficial to the state and is either, one, a significant attribute of the state, special trout water, a national park, a state park or monument, a national or state wildlife refuge, a wilderness area, or a designated wild and scenic river, or, two, the water has exceptional recreational or ecological significance, or, three, the water has exceptional water quality and has not been significantly altered in a way that detracts from its value as a natural resource.
And based on your review, did the petition demonstrate that these water bodies fulfill these eligibility criteria?
Yes, the petitioners demonstrated that several waters identified in the petition met the ONRW criterion for one or more of the significant attributes identified in 20.6.4.9B1 and MAC, such as a special state trout water or a wild and scenic river. And although not specifically identified in the petition, but mentioned in Mr. Adelos and Mr. McQuillan's direct written technical testimony, the state designation of the Pecos Canyon State Park, which includes several of the nominated tributaries, provides another point of evidence for eligibility that is pursuant to 20.6.4.9B1 and MAC. And the petitioners also demonstrated that all of the waters identified in the petition met eligibility criterion for exceptional recreational or ecological significance pursuant to 20.6.4.9B2 and MAC through the New Mexico Department of Game and Fish Data. So therefore, NMED believes that the petitioners provided sufficient evidence to demonstrate that all the nominated water bodies fulfilled at least one of the eligibility criteria for an ONRW designation consistent with 20.6.4.9B and MAC. And Section 4 of my direct technical testimony describes further how the department verified the eligibility criteria for the nominated water bodies.
Okay, I'm gonna ask you briefly about the submittal elements in 20.6.4.9A and MAC. Why is it important that an ONRW petition include the elements that are contained in that rule?
The submittal elements in 20.6.4.9A and MAC are in place to identify the nominated waters, its specific boundaries, describe the nomination's scientific basis, and ensure the transparency to the public, stakeholders, and the Commission.
And with respect to this matter, how did the petition fulfill those submittal requirements?
The petitioner submitted all of the six required elements to nominated waters as ONRWs. Required elements include maps, evidence in support of the nomination, water quality data, a discussion of activities that might reduce water quality, a discussion of the economic impact, and an affidavit of notice of publication. And all of this is in Section 5 of my direct written technical testimony that describes the department's verification of the submittal requirements for the nominated water bodies.
Okay, so to sum up, did the department find that the petitioners fulfilled the submittal requirements in 20.6.4.9A and the eligibility criteria in 20.6.4.9B?
The department found that all of the nominated water bodies in the petition met at least one of the eligibility criteria in 20.6.4.9B and that the petitioners provided all of the submittal elements in 20.6.4.9A and MAC.
Okay, well, Ms. Fulham has answered questions as to whether or not Petitioners Exhibit 1 and the department's Exhibit 36 are identical, and I think we've concluded that they are. So just to sum up, does the department support this ONRW nomination?
Yes, the department supports designated identified waters in Petitioners Exhibit 1 as ONRWs.
Thank you, Ms. Aranda. I have no further questions at this point. I would like to bring back Ms. Fulham to stand with Ms. Aranda for cross-examination as part of a I would like to bring back Ms. Fulham to stand with Ms. Aranda for cross-examination as part of a panel.
Are there any parties that wish to cross-examine these two witnesses?
Mr. Hearing Officer, I have just a couple of quick questions.
So, Mr. McQuillan, are you familiar with cross-examination?
Yes, I am, sir.
Okay, good, then please proceed.
And this question is addressed to the panel of experts with the department. The petitioners in Section 3H of their petition described the Upper Pecos watershed as one of the state's highest quality and most valued surface waters. Does the department agree with that characterization?
This is Jennifer. Mr. McQuillan, could you rephrase that? Sorry.
The petitioners described the Upper Pecos watershed in their petition as one of New Mexico's highest quality and most valued surface waters. And I was wondering if the department agrees with that characterization of the petitioners?
Mr. McQuillan, that's a good question. I think the department narrowed its scope of evaluation to the less subjective elements of the petition to make sure that it met that scientific basis or the criteria. So it was a little bit beyond the scope to go into the subjective opinions of the value and quality of the water, and on a professional level.
Okay, thank you. And earlier today, we heard testimony about the recreational economy of Pecos and indeed surrounding areas. And would you agree that the recreational economy of, say, the Village of Pecos is evidence of the exceptional recreational quality of the Upper Pecos watershed?
The petitioners submitted fish and wildlife, New Mexico Fish and Wildlife data for angler use and special species. So the department took into consideration the angler data as evidence of kind of as concrete evidence of recreational, exceptional recreational use. Did that answer your question?
I think it did. I was following up on the question that Commissioner Dominguez asked about how we define exceptional value. And I was wondering if the department felt that the recreational economy of the Village of Pecos, people making money off of recreation locally, would be evidence of the exceptional value for recreation of the Upper Pecos watershed? And I think you answered the question. If you'd like to add more, that'd be fine. Mr. Hearing Officer, that's all the questions I have.
Okay, thank you. Ms. Noakes?
Thank you, Mr. Hearing Officer. Petitioners have no questions, and thank the department for their testimony in support of the nomination.
Are there any commissioners that have cross-examination questions for these two witnesses? Mr. Blankert?
Yes, thank you, Mr. Hearing Officer. I don't know whether the department is the best one to answer this question, but I noticed that the language that was used in the original petition for the rule change that's proposed has seemed to have evolved into language that's presented in the pre-hearing statements of both parties, which may be the same language. And I don't know how that happened or what the impact of it is. It does not, I don't know that it has any significant impact, but if someone could walk us through why the language changed, that would be helpful.
Commissioner Blankert, are you speaking to the language in NMAC that's now being proposed?
Yes.
I can hopefully add some clarification to that. The department always tries to work with petitioners when we're developing water quality standards. There are some nuances with the language in NMAC. And just as with any other water quality standards amendment, we both start out from a certain point, and then we work towards something that can be proved. It has to go through records as well. So, and there's some standardized formatting. So you'll see that we always talk about water bodies from the downstream portion to the upstream portion. So there's been a little bit of tweaking of the language itself, just to be consistent with the rest of the regulations. And as with all rulemakings, we try to work with the petitioner to come to an agreeance on what that language would be.
So is it fair to say that the proposal that exists now is an agreed compromise between the department and the petitioner, or compromise is the right word? An agreed language between the two parties, is that correct?
Commissioner Blankert, yes.
Thank you, thank you.
Are there any other? Commissioner Dominguez?
Yes, thank you, Mr. Hearing Officer. Good afternoon, Ms. Fulham and Ms. Aranda. Thank you for your testimony. Ms. Aranda, it's been covered in your written testimony that there were certain stream segments that did not have data available. And although it's not a requirement for the designation where there to be data in all of the segments, so assuming we have some segments that haven't been assessed and have no baseline, how do we determine degradation without that baseline data since an ONRW does not allow degradation?
Yes, thank you. Did I wait till the end of your question?
Yes, go ahead.
Yes, thank you, Commissioner Dominguez. That is a very, very important question because you do require a baseline in order to proceed with any kind of measurement of degradation. And so my understanding is that when there's not an assessment on an ONRW river or waterway, that it's kind of a case-by-case scenario. So I'm not, it's not in my forte to talk about permits, but I think, and I believe that there would have to be a requirement of some kind of assessment at the time. If Ms. Fulham would like to add to that statement?
Yes, thank you, Ms. Aranda. I think you summarized that well. If there were to be a permit that wanted to discharge, and this is my understanding, and I'm the standards coordinator, not the permitting part of the branch, it's my understanding that when somebody comes in for a permit, there needs to be an establishment of what the water quality is. And as an ONRW, we have that no degradation clause for dischargers. And so that would have to be established for any of those waters that do not have any baseline water quality data. Or when we do monitoring, that may be a data point in which we need to go collect data, depending on resources. So there's several ways that we can go about filling that gap.
Okay, thank you both for that answer. So I'll turn to Ms. Fulham. In your written testimony, you've alluded to other infrastructure services needs such as water sewer utilities, such as that there's a process established within the anti-degradation policy that whoever might be implementing those practices has to go through. So could you give us a little bit of perspective or elaboration on that?
Thank you, Commissioner Dominguez. It's a good question. It is outlined in 20.6.4.8 and MAC on what that process is. And again, as the standards coordinator, I don't oversee that process. I know that it exists. It does require public noticing, and it does require the commission's approval for those time-sensitive. There's several different pockets of different activities, and one of them for infrastructure would be that it's needed for public health and safety. And so that process is outlined in NMAC.
Okay. Thank you, Ms. Fulham. Let me turn to another area of your written testimony. On page 8, you kind of elaborate a little bit there about pre-existing uses. And I would like to kind of explore that a little bit. And I'll do my best to ask questions as to not prompt a objection from Mr. Verheil. So let's just give this a try. So if I'm correct, this is the first ONRW petition that's encompassed any volume of private property as where the other ONRWs that currently exist pretty much are totally federal land or combination or other public land. Is that correct?
To my knowledge, yes.
So my focus is a little bit on impacts to private property. So with the pre-existing use language that's in there, and maybe it's easier if I just use some examples and see if this gets the thought process down correctly. So if I own land in that area, and I've got water rights, and I currently have irrigated pasture, and I've got handful of cattle that I run on that irrigated pasture, and I decide because of the amount of people that come up through there that it'd be more profitable if I transitioned from running cattle to putting in a U-PIC farm there and still utilize my water rights. Now, the term pre-existing use, does that apply to the fact that I have cattle grazing there? Or is it the fact that that land is assessed as agricultural property, and I have water rights to use on that? Help me wrap my head around this pre-existing use of land. And there was a question mark at the end of that.
Commissioner Dominguez, I hear that as a question. I was thinking. You bring up a very important question. And I just look now, we do not have a definition for pre-existing uses. What it does say is that if it's a pre-existing use that is allowed under federal and state law, it may continue. I think we would be splitting hairs, although valid in action. I don't know that I would be the one that can split that hair as to pre-existing, you know, beneficial use of your water right or whether that can be changed from grazing to farming, vice versa. So I think it's beyond the scope of my ability to differentiate the pre-existing use clause that's in our regulations. And there is no definition, so I can't elaborate further for that one.
Thank you for a good shot at that. And I appreciate your effort on that. And maybe some of this discussion is best suited for deliberation aspect, but I think it's an important factor because it is the first time that we've ventured down the private property side attached to an ONRW. And because of the vagueness of that statement, I'm trying to wrap my head around whether there runs the potential of lining up with a de facto deed restriction on that private property because of the ONRW designation. So I realize this is probably outside your expertise. I appreciate your efforts to entertain my question. And I think with that, that concludes my line of questioning. Thank you, Mr. Hearing Officer.
Thank you, Commissioner Dominguez. Chair Stringer?
Thank you. Good afternoon, and thank you both for your testimony. I'm not sure who my question should be directed to. But to build off the segments that Commissioner Dominguez asked about that didn't have any baseline data, according to the implementation plan, if I understand it correctly, currently in our water quality standards, before the commission could approve any temporary activities, a receiving water assessment would need to be conducted. Is that a correct statement? Thereby limiting, sorry, I'll just wrap this up. Thereby limiting what the commission could approve if no baseline data existed, part of the implementation process would require the baseline data to be collected before the commission took any action on approving that temporary work.
Chair Stringer and Ms. Aranda, if you don't mind, I'll start, and then Ms. Aranda can follow up. From what I'm reading in 20.6.4.8A3 and MAC, for those temporary and short-term activities that would cause degradation of water quality, it does say that the degradation, first is using the term degradation. And in order to understand that there's degradation, we would need some sort of baseline to know that it may cause the water quality to diminish. So I think that's the active word in the regulations. Degradation may not need to be quantitative, it could be qualitative. And I don't know that the, I think that may be up to the commission to determine whether degradation is qualitative or quantitative as far as that part of the regulations and approving any short-term degradation. So I don't know that not having baseline prohibits or limits the commission in approving activities.
Okay, thank you. Ms. Aranda, do you have anything to add to that response?
I just wanted to ask if, did you also need a clarification on downstream? Did you mention downstream protections? Did I hear correctly?
I wasn't including that aspect in my question. I was just thinking about the segments that don't have the baseline data.
Understood.
And then my one follow-up question to that is, if the degradation goes longer than the allowable six months for those temporary activities, what are the consequences or what act? what are the consequences or what actions occur after that point? If they go beyond that six-month requirement in the standards?
Chair Stringer. To my knowledge, there is nothing in 20.6.4 NMAC that discusses what happens next.
Thank you. Those are my questions. Thanks.
Commissioner Timmons.
Thank you, Mr. Hearing Officer. My question is, I guess, to get a little reminder on what is the current monitoring frequency in this area?
Commissioner Timmons, it's my understanding we're on an eight-to-10-year monitoring cycle throughout the state and we finished up in the Upper Pecos last cycle or last field 2020. I think 2020 is when we finished up in the Upper Pecos, so we probably won't be back in there for eight to 10 years. That does not preclude us from going in for project-specific monitoring activities.
Okay. Thank you for that. I think my other question, just following up on that, is just thinking about general for ONW, does that provide any further motivation or effort toward increasing frequency of monitoring in order to have a handle on what degradation might be happening? Is is there, I guess, does that elevate it to a priority list by any means?
Commissioner Timmons, it's all dependent on resources and getting our ambient water quality is probably our first priority. But ONRWs are definitely considered a priority as well. It's just dependent on available resources for monitoring.
Okay.
It's short answered, no.
Right. Thank you for that.
Are there any other commissioners who have cross-examination for the department's witnesses? Are there any members of the public who have cross-examination for the department's witnesses? Mr. Verheul, may these two witnesses be excused?
They may. Thank you, Mr. Hearing Officer.
You're welcome. Now, let's see, I saw petitioners witness on the camera a little while ago. Ms. Noakes?
Hello, Ms. Fox. Hello, Mr. Hearing Officer. Members of the commission, my name is Tanis Fox. I'm an attorney with Western Environmental Law Center and will be representing petitioners and will be conducting the next two examinations.
Please proceed.
Thank you, Mr. Hearing Officer. And thank you, Mr. Hearing Officer, for allowing these two witnesses to go out of order. I'd like to call now Ms. Paula Garcia.
Ms. Garcia and Mr. Probst, can you both turn on your cameras so that we can get you sworn in? Excellent. Would you spell your names for the court reporter, please, one at a time, starting with Ms. Garcia?
My name is Paula Garcia, P-A-U-L-A-G-A-R-C-I-A.
And Mr. Probst?
My name is David Probst, D-A-V-I-D-P-R-O-P-S-T.
Ms. Aranda?
You would both raise your right hands? Do you and each of you swear or affirm the testimony you will give will be the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth?
I do.
Yes.
Okay, Ms. Fox, please proceed.
Thank you, Mr. Hearing Officer. Ms. Garcia, please state your name.
Paula Garcia.
Ms. Garcia, please describe your relevant experience as a witness in this matter.
I am executive director of the New Mexico Aseca Association and I have held this position for more than 24 years. I'm a rancher, farmer, and a parciante on Aseca del Alto Norte in the Mora Valley. I also serve as commissioner on the New Mexico Energy Stream Commission.
Is Petitioners Exhibit 22 an accurate copy of your resume?
Yes.
And are you, you prepared testimony for this proceeding, which is Exhibit 21, is that correct?
Correct.
And is that testimony accurate to the best of your knowledge?
Yes, it is.
And do you adopt that testimony as written?
Yes.
Ms. Garcia would like to present her testimony before the commission. Ms. Garcia, please proceed with your presentation.
Thank you. The New Mexico Aseca Association is a petitioner in the petition to designate waters of the Upper Pecos watershed as outstanding national resource waters. Thank you for the opportunity to explain why our organization is a petitioner and supports this critical designation. My testimony will address Section 20.6.4.9.B NMAC demonstrating that the designation of the waters of the Upper Pecos watershed as ONRWs will benefit the state of New Mexico. The NMAA is a statewide membership-based organization of asecas governed by a federation of asecas, the Congreso de las Asecas, which unanimously supports protection of the Upper Pecos watershed through ONW designation. The mission of the NMAA is to protect water in our asecas, to grow healthy food for our families and communities, and to honor and preserve our cultural heritage. A primary means of realizing our mission is through the conservation and protection of water for future generations of asequeros. Awa es vida. The waters of New Mexico's Upper Pecos watershed are the lifeblood of the region's aseca system, sustaining and enriching centuries-old asecas and farming and ranching traditions that depend upon clean water. Asecas depend upon clean water from the Upper Pecos watershed to irrigate traditional crops and to sustain vital cultural traditions. Aseca systems provide a significant benefit to the state of New Mexico, both culturally and economically. Asecas have a long history of respect and stewardship of the waters of the Upper Pecos, which has resulted in the high water quality that these precious waters afford. Our intricate customs and traditions, our collective approach to water management, and our unique role in water governance have resulted in extensive empirical and cultural knowledge about the Pecos River and its tributaries. Based upon this knowledge, NMAA is compelled not only to support designating waters of the Upper Pecos watershed as ONRWs, but to be a petitioner in this important action before the Water Quality Control Commission. One of the most effective ways to deliver on the promise of clean water and resilient watersheds for present and future generations is to designate the Upper Pecos watershed waters as outstanding waters. The ONW designation will help ensure that the Upper Pecos watershed remains clean and sustains present and future generations of aseca parciantes. Importantly, the ONW designation will complement and enhance aseca's traditional and historic uses of water, and we stand in strong support of this designation. Supporting and preserving New Mexico's asecas and their parciantes' ability to continue to feed their families and communities and preserve their centuries-old way of life represents a significant benefit to New Mexico, its history and its multicultural landscape, and its commitment to preserving the family and cultural traditions of aseca life.
Thank you, Ms. Garcia. That concludes her testimony. She will now stand for cross-examination and the parties and questions from the commission.
Are there any parties with cross-examination questions?
No questions from the Environment Department. Mr. Hearing Officer, we thank Ms. Garcia for her testimony.
Mr. Hearing Officer, I have no questions. Thank you.
Are there any commissioners with cross-examination questions for this witness? Are there any members of the public with cross-examination questions? Ms. Fox, may Ms. Garcia be excused?
Yes, she may, Mr. Hearing Officer.
Would you like to call Mr. Probst?
Yes, I now call Dr. David Probst. Please state your name.
It's David L. Probst.
Dr. Probst, what is your educational background?
I have a Bachelor of Science from New Mexico State University and a Master's and PhD in Biology from Colorado State University.
Would you please describe your work experience briefly?
For 26 years, I worked for the Department of Game and Fish as its native fish biologist. In that capacity, I worked throughout New Mexico and the adjacent states, investigating biology of native and non-native fishes, dynamics of fish assemblages, response responses of fish assemblages to natural and human coast, disturbance and taxonomy and systematic of native fishes. Much of this work has been published in peer-reviewed scientific journals. Also worked with colleagues from other state and federal agencies, academia, and NGOs in developing and implementing conservation programs for native fishes of the Rio Grande and Pecos, San Juan, and Hilo rivers. Currently, I am adjunct research professor at the University of New Mexico, where I continue to work with my with colleagues on biology and conservation of arid land fishes.
Is Petitioners Exhibit 12 an accurate copy of your curriculum vitae?
Yes, it is.
And Dr. Probst, you prepared testimony for this proceeding, which is Petitioners Exhibit 11, and which included over 50 sources for your testimony, is that correct?
Yes, it is.
And is your testimony correct to the best of your knowledge?
Yes, except for a typographical area on page 11 of my written testimony and table two. The number of significant or SGN CN species for Davis Creek should be 18, not 187.
There's a lot of SGN species, but not 187. Dr. Probst, do you adopt your testimony with that one correction?
Yes, I do.
Could you please summarize the testimony that you will provide to the commissioners today?
Yes. There are 16 named waters and 96 unnamed tributaries to those waters and 16 unnamed wetlands within the boundaries of the proposed ONW for the Upper Pecos watershed. Functionally, these waters can be classified as perennial or non-perennial. There is considerable information on the ecological processes within perennial waters and their connections to the surrounding terrestrial habitats. Until the past 20 years or so, little attention, however, was given to the role of non-perennial waters to the overall ecological health and functioning of the larger watershed. Products of ecological processes, chemical, physical, and biological that occur in non-perennial waters contribute immeasurably to the ecological processes that occur within the perennial waters. Today, my testimony will focus on the critical role of non-perennial waters and wetlands that they have in maintaining and ensuring the vitality and persistence of aquatic and riparian communities associated with the perennial waters. In my opinion, the exceptional ecological significance of the Upper Pecos watershed is evident when it is viewed in a holistic perspective that includes all features, perennial and non-perennial.
Dr. Probst has prepared a PowerPoint presentation summarizing his testimony that we filed with the commission on April 8. Dr. Probst, would you please proceed with your presentation?
You ready? Okay, good afternoon, Madam Chair, Commissioners, and Hearing Officers. Thank you. Let me close my
Right. Close the closed caption. Thank you.
Thank you for the opportunity to present testimony in support of the petition to designate the Upper Pecos watershed as an outstanding national resource water. My presentation today will focus on and illustrate the biological, physical, and chemical importance of aquatic habitats of perennial and non-perennial watercourses and wetlands, and how these habitats contribute to the exceptional ecological significance of the proposed Pecos watershed ONW. Loss or impairment of any hydrologic feature of the Upper Pecos watershed diminishes its ability to provide essential ecosystem services such as key habitats for wildlife, nutrient processing and transfer, flood attenuation, enhanced water quality, and recreational opportunities. Collectively, these waters, perennial and non-perennial, because of their connectivity and interdependence, are, in my professional opinion, worthy of ONW designation. Within the proposed ONW, there are 16 named and 96 unnamed watercourses or stream channels and 16 unnamed wetlands. Collectively, these habitats provide platforms for an array of ecological activities that contribute to the overall vibrant functioning of the Upper Pecos watershed ecosystem. Loss or diminution of any hydrologic feature, perennial or non-perennial, impairs the ecological functioning of the Upper Pecos ecosystem. In addition to the Pecos River, there are 15 named watercourses in the Upper Pecos watershed. All 15 named watercourses are ultimately confluence with the Pecos River. The unnamed watercourses feed into the named tributaries in Pecos River to create an interconnected and interdependent aquatic network in which numerous ecological processes occur that are critical to the overall health of the Upper Pecos watershed ecosystem. The Upper Pecos watershed supports a rich diversity of wildlife and plants. A major reason for the presence seasonal and year-round of so many species is the diversity of habitats, including those associated with perennial and non-perennial watercourses and wetlands. The New Mexico State Wildlife Action Plan identifies species whose persistence has been compromised for various reasons and has designated such species as species of greatest conservation need. In the Southern Rocky Mountains Ecoregion, which includes the Upper Pecos watershed, 63 SGCN species are present. Of these 63 species, 23 occur in the Upper Pecos watershed. Almost all are birds. In addition to being designated SGN CN species, four birds and one mammal that occur in the Upper Pecos watershed receive federal or state protection. Although Rio Grande Cutthroat Trout is not protected under the Federal Endangered Species Act or New Mexico Wildlife Conservation Act, and it is not an SGCN species, it is a recreationally important species in addition to being the New Mexico state fish. The Rio Grande Cutthroat Trout Conservation Strategy calls for 13 to 15 conservation populations in the Pecos Geographic Management Unit. The Upper Pecos watershed currently supports six Rio Grande Cutthroat Trout conservation populations. Nearly one-half of the Pecos GMU conservation goal of the conservation strategy for the species or these six populations are one-third. Each of these populations is protected from non-native trout by natural or constructed fish movement barriers. In addition to Rio Grande Cutthroat Trout, there are also Rainbow, Brown, and other cutthroat trouts in the streams of the Upper Pecos watershed. Collectively, these trout populations provide a recreational fishery that draws anglers not just from New Mexico, but other states and nations. Six plant species found in the Upper Pecos watershed are recognized as rare or in need of some level of protection. Three of these species, mountain lily, yellow lady's slipper, and hooded lady's tresses occur primarily in moist habitats such as the wetlands associated with the Upper Pecos watershed streams. Holy Ghost Ipomopousus occurs only along the short reach of Holy Ghost Creek. Holy Ghost Ipomopousus occurs only along the short reach of Holy Ghost Creek. The exceptional character of the Upper Pecos Watershed is a consequence of it being a functioning ecosystem with all parts contributing. An often overlooked component of an ecologically functional watershed is the network of wetlands and non-perennial tributaries and their contribution to the vitality of perennial streams and the systems and the entire watershed. The following is a brief overview of the physical, chemical, and biological linkages between non-perennial and perennial watercourses and the important contributions of non-perennial tributaries to the ecological functioning of the Upper Pecos Watershed. So, when and how are non-perennial stream courses wetted? Surface flows in non-perennial channels occurs mainly during spring snowmelt and occasionally after late summer monsoon storms. Inte-year flow variation in non-perennial watercourses is considerable. Consequently, the spatial and temporal extent of wetted habitats differs substantially from year to year. This slide illustrates differences in annual discharge in the Pecos River at the USGS gauge near the village of Pecos. There was practically no spring runoff flow pulse in 2000, thus few if any non-perennial watercourses were wetted. Five years later, in 2005, peak spring discharge was more than triple that of 2000, and most, if not all, non-perennial watercourses were wetted. Few if any non-perennial watercourses were wetted by monsoon precipitation in 2000 or 2005. In 2010 and 2015, wetting of many non-perennial watercourses likely occurred during spring snowmelt and after monsoon storms. In the course of a year, the hydrologic cycle, the stereotypic non-perennial stream, might be like that illustrated on this slide. For much of the year, non-perennial channel is dry, and there appears to be little physical, chemical, or biological activity. But as flows increase with snowmelt, channel sediments are mobilized, with larger particles grinding the leaf litter that has accumulated over the previous months. This litter is colonized by microbes that are in turn grazed by aquatic insects. These aquatic insects are the primary food source for the trout that are sought by anglers in the perennial waters. As snowbelt flows recede, habitats shrink during summer. Water temperatures increase and dissolved oxygen levels decline, and those that can, like the giant water bug, depart. Other macroinvertebrates remain. Depending on numerous physical factors, such as the channel's underlying geophysical features, pooled water may persist within the non-perennial channel during summer. These scattered habitats often have luxuriant growths of algae, where a variety of aquatic insects, such as water boatmen pictured here, might be found. Monsoon storms bring sufficient water to reconnect channel habitats, as well as provide a corridor for aquatic macroinvertebrates to move up and downstream. By late summer or October, monsoon flow contributions have ceased, and the channel is again dry. The watercourses of the Upper Pecos have a dendritic pattern, branched like the roots of a tree, with the smaller tendrils attached to larger ones, and so on to the largest being attached to the taproot, the main channel. A critical aspect of this pattern is its connectivity. Connectivity need not be temporally continuous, but connectivity must occur at a frequency that enables the products of physical, chemical, and biological processes in the upper reaches to be conveyed to downstream perennial reaches. In a dendritic system like the Upper Pecos, the smallest branches are typically non-perennial. Only the largest branches are perennial. Inorganic and organic matter from the surrounding watershed is washed, blown, or falls into streamcourses, where organic matter undergoes physical, chemical, and biological changes, while inorganic matter is physically and chemically processed. Each watercourse, wet or dry, perennial or not, has three dimensions: longitudinal, lateral, and vertical. In each dimension, physical, chemical, and biological processes occur in both directions: up and downstream longitudinally, back and forth from stream channel to riparian community laterally, and vertically into the rip channel substrate or hypereic zone and up into the water column. For example, the life cycle of the mayfly, Calabetes, illustrates the bidirectionality of each spatial dimension. Aerial adult females deposit eggs in wetted, non-perennial streams, where in time the eggs hatch. After releasing eggs, the spent females die and their bodies float downstream to decay or be consumed by feeding trout, orchestrating the longitudinal connectivity. Males fly to riparian habitats to die, and is an example of lateral connectivity. After hatching, Calabetes remain in the stream, feeding on organic matter. As flows diminish, the Calabetes naiads are young, find refuge in the wetted hypereic of vertical connectivity. And when flows return, they emerge and molt on exposed rocks. Following molting, adults fly upstream and gather in mating swarms, and females deposit eggs in the stream, a longitudinal dimension, and the cycle begins again. In addition to spatial dimensions, there is a time dimension to the biological, physical, and chemical processes. Non-perennial watercourses go through at least three wetting phases each time there is sufficient flow to wet the channel, as illustrated in this generalized depiction of the annual wet/dry cycle of a non-perennial watercourse. The duration of each phase is largely dependent upon regional precipitation, winter snowpack, and late summer monsoon rains. For much of the year, the channel is dry, and there is little activity in biological, physical, and chemical processes. But that which does occur is ecologically important. For example, leaf litter accumulates that ultimately becomes an important energy source for microbes that colonize leaves and are in turn consumed by aquatic insects. Once melting snows or monsoon rains restore surface flows, all processes rapidly become supercharged. The hypereic zone is refreshed, and pre-adult life stages of aquatic insects that sought refuge in the hypereic during the dry season emerge to feed on fine particulate organic matter, molt, and reproduce. As snowbelt or monsoon flows decline, surface water becomes limited to scattered pools, where decomposition of organic matter continues and organisms that can leave the shrinking and increasingly inhospitable habitat for downstream perennial reaches or make their way to adjacent perennial watercourses. The foregoing, albeit brief, provides a snapshot of some of the biological, physical, and chemical processes that occur in non-perennial watercourses and ultimately make a significant contribution to the ecological functioning of the Upper Pecos Watershed. Until this point, I've given little attention to the 16 unnamed wetlands that occur in the Upper Pecos Watershed. A good definition of a wetland is an area that is inundated or saturated at a frequency sufficient to support a prevalence of vegetation adapted for life in water-saturated soil conditions. Wetlands of the Upper Pecos Watershed provide essential habitat for a variety of species, including the northern leopard frog, hydrophilic or water-loving plants, such as yellow lady slippers, birds, and numerous aquatic insects. During elevated flows, wetlands absorb water and thus help attenuate the effects of floods. As flows recede, wetlands function as water reservoirs, allowing water to seep into adjacent watercourses during dry periods. The foregoing has provided a brief overview of the complex and dynamic relationships between non-perennial watercourses and the perennial streams they feed into. Much of the energy that supports life in perennial streams is derived from non-perennial watercourses. If these connections are lost or compromised, the ecological functioning of the entire watershed is compromised. A vibrant, healthy ecosystem provides numerous services. Some are readily recognized, for example, clean fresh water, while others are less obvious, such as nutrient cycling. In my professional opinion, the wetlands and non-perennial and perennial waters of the Upper Pecos Watershed are ecologically inseparable. Together, they make the Upper Pecos Watershed an exceptional and ecologically significant stream network worthy of designation as outstanding national resource waters. And that's my testimony. Thank you. And with the Hearing Officer's pleasure, I think I can answer questions.
Are there any parties that have cross-examination for this witness?
Mr. Hearing Officer, I have, I have one question.
Please.
Dr. Probst, you know, if you're not a spielunker like me, you may not be aware. Have you heard about the two species of arachnids that live in Terrero Cave, which is just a stone's throw from Pecos River in the Terrero area? They have been named in honor of Jimenez Pueblo because of the connection through Pecos Pueblo, the ancestral Pueblo there.
Uh, no, I'm not. I guess I should be, though.
I'll address that in my, in my testimony. Thank you.
Mr. Brighill?
And the Environment Department has no questions. Thank you, Dr. Probst.
Are there any Commissioners with cross-examination for this witness? Are there any members of the public with cross-examination for this witness? Ms. Fox, may this witness be excused?
Yes, Mr. Hearing Officer. And with that, that concludes petitioner's case.
Thank you, Ms. Fox. Uh, Mr. McQuillan?
Mr. Hearing Officer, my, my screen's kind of frozen up, but I think you can, can you see me and hear me?
Yes.
Okay. I, with your permission, sir, I'd like to forego an opening statement and just proceed right into my, into my testimony.
Okay, have you been sworn in, sir?
Yes, sir, I have.
Okay.
And I have a PowerPoint, but it's not letting me share it.
That's because Ms. Jones undid the screen sharing a moment ago. Ms. Jones? You have permission now.
Mr. McQuillan, you should be able to share your screen.
Okay, it's not, there's a, there may be a slow connection on my end. I'm just, it's, my screen is frozen, so maybe I'll just go walk through it, because it does parallel my, my direct testimony, the written statement that I filed. My name is Dennis McQuillan, and I'm a hydrogeologist by education with a minor in chemistry, math, and physics. I worked for the Environment Department and its predecessor agency for more than four decades and did a lot of work in the Upper Pecos. I, early in my career, there were periodic fish kills from the old Terrero mine that we worked on, and then a catastrophic fish kill that's detailed in my written testimony. I worked with the Upper Pecos on liquid waste septic tank issues and made some presentations to them and, and offered input on their original watershed management plan. I also worked on some of the wildfires in the area, you know, most notably the Tres Laguna's Fire when I was with the Drinking Water Bureau and looking at the possible impacts of the, of the wildfire, you know, which there, there were significant impacts. I also lived in Pecos for two years, more than two years, and I really would like to echo some of the statements that were made by residents of that area of the, the, just the really wonderful nature of that community with the Upper Pecos Watershed and the Pecos wilderness in your backyard. And I will provide some, as it's in my written testimony, some personal testimony on just the outstanding recreational, multi-generational value of the, of the Upper Pecos Watershed, with an example of my family, even before I had a family. The, um... I did, I presented a paper last Friday at the New Mexico Geological Society meeting. It's in my, in, in my slides. Let me see if it'll let me... Yeah, I can share now. Let me apologize for that. Can you all see my slides?
No.
No.
Well, it says it's connecting. I'll just move on. I apologize. I think the connection is slow out here in the woods where I live, because of the wind. But I presented a paper on the caves of the Upper Pecos. There's a significant cave in Terrero. And there is one typo in my written testimony on page 17 of my summary, which is page 25 of the PDF, where I described, I, I use the term scared instead of sacred cave. And the cave is sacred, not scared. But it was the leadership of Pecos Pueblo that got the state of New Mexico to, to put a gate and a lock on the Terrero Cave because of the profound spiritual significance that this cave has to the descendants of Pecos Pueblo who reside at Jimenez Pueblo, as, as was described by, by Lieutenant Governor Toya. In fact, I use a paper he'd written that's posted online for some of the information on my, on my paper I presented last week. And there are two arachnids that live that are, the type locality is the Terrero Cave in the immediate vicinity. As far as I know, they, they, they live only here, anywhere on earth. One is a lampshade spider, and the other one is a harvestman. And they have a very protected environment. So the gating and locking of this cave not only protects the, the anthropological, spiritual use of this cave, but also the unique arachnids that live inside. So, I wanted to thank the petitioners for stepping up to the plate. And finally, the petition, it's, the petition and the testimony they've presented is very compelling. And I wanted to thank the Environment Department's Surface Water Bureau for their expert testimony, which, which provides even more compelling information to inform the commission's decision on this. So I wanted to just provide some additional technical information that I didn't see in the petition on, on the activities that might reduce water quality in the watershed, the exceptional recreational significance, as well as the designation of nominated waters being beneficial to the state. So the hard rock mining that's addressed in the petition is a very serious issue. The, the mining occurred in the, in the late 1800s and early 1900s. It caused significant water pollution. You can see in my written testimony, I've got pictures of Willow Creek before the reclamation. Picture was taken in 1991. And after the restoration was completed of, of the creek where mine waste was removed. And, and you can see the, the acid mine drainage in the pre-picture in a, in a engineered watershed afterwards. So there's been significant progress made, although the, the legislature is still appropriating money under the, as explained in my written testimony, the 20% share of the state for ongoing reclamation. So, this catastrophic fish kill occurred in 1991. About 100,000 trout died as a result of aluminum and zinc being washed into the Pecos River. And that triggered the negotiation of administrative, an administrative order and consent, which I had a major role in negotiating with the mining company and other parties, that led to an ongoing success story. Now, there's still a tunnel that, that drains the mine workings, and there's still work going on, both on the mine site and the El Molino Mill. They had an aerial tramway that took ore from the Terrero Mine down to the mill. But I think that the designation of ONRW is really important to ensure that the cleanup of the historical mining, which has been going on for 30 years now, is which has been going on for thirty years now, is completed. And secondly, to ensure that any future mining is conducted in a manner to avoid degradation of the existing high-quality water and the exceptional recreational ecological significance. My, my written testimony, there, there was some discussion earlier about possible future mining. There are mineral deposits that have not been exploited, and there's a mining company that's looking at this. They have a webpage that has geologic cross-sections and description of the metals that are found, and they applied for a, um, permit to do some exploratory drilling. So it is possible that mining may occur in the future. That wouldn't be prohibited by the ONRW designation, but we certainly want to make sure that future activities comply with the anti-degradation standard. There's also septic systems. As, as far as I know, we haven't, and I was a liquid waste program manager for about a decade when I worked for the Environment Department. And as far as I know, we don't have any documented well water contamination uh, from this. And, but there are numerous septic systems in the watershed, and it's an issue that needs to be monitored. It's mentioned in the Upper Pecos Watershed Association Plan for the, for the watershed. There's been a lot of discussion of recreational overuse, and the petitioners addressed this in their, in their material. And interestingly, I, I think one of the earlier witnesses talked about the COVID pandemic and how people flocked up into the, into the watershed, into the wilderness, into the Upper Pecos watershed. That was a good thing. But Dalton Canyon, in particular, was really, like an earlier witness said, they saw historical usage of that. And one of the links in my written testimony is to a website by Sanitay National Forest, where they describe that, that increase in use and how they're taking measures to limit vehicular traffic. And they put up permanent barriers to keep people and cars out of the riparian area. And I, and I think, you know, the bottom line on this recreational use is that the, the Forest Service and the State Parks Division, the experts there know how to handle this. And they're taking efforts to, to respond to the increased use and to protect the resources that are up there. Waste management, there are vacuum trucks that, that drive up and pump the material out of septic tanks as part of the routine maintenance. And on a statewide basis, we have had issues with some of these vacuum truck operators dumping into rivers and arroyos and irrigation canals. And there's also the issue of recreational vehicles. Sometimes they don't take their black water and gray water to a permitted facility, and they discharge it on roads or flat areas and the remote, um, areas of the forest. And that's a potential issue as well. Wildfires. The, there's no question that in New Mexico, and I have references in my testimony on this, that the size of wildfires and the intensity have increased over the past several decades. And another one of my references is a report that the New Mexico Bureau of Geology. They put out a draft last year and updated it in January of this year. And they are predicting that the frequency and severity of wildfires in the state are predicted to increase over the next several decades. Now, with the wildfires and particularly severe fires, when the vegetation burns in the, in the smoke and the material condenses, it can create a waxy type of deposit on the soil, which makes the soils hydrophobic, meaning that they repel water. And in fact, the Forest Service people sometimes take an eyedropper and put it on a burned area as, as a qualitative assessment of, of how hydrophobic the soil is. But the significance of this is that when it rains and you have snowmelt, the water runs off and in a post-burn area can create flooding, it can damage water infrastructure, accelerate erosion, sedimentation downstream from the erosion can create debris flows. I've got a, a video of a debris flow from the Los Contras Fire in my written testimony. We did have debris flows in Holy Ghost Canyon after, uh, the, the Tres Laguna's fire, and there was some damage to roads and the human infrastructure, some cabins. Obviously, and I think other witnesses have mentioned the potential for water pollution, as well as fish kills are a very common occurrence when the, when the river turns gray and black. And, and we've had that certainly in the watershed. My written testimony has a picture of a high severity burn area from the two thousand eleven Los Contras wildfire. And it's, you can see the hydrophobic soil and the black sticks. It's all left of the trees. It's really pretty staggering what the damage of a, a tree-killing fire, like a high severity burn can do to a, to a forest. I also have a picture, uh, I didn't find any public domain pictures of debris flows in Holy Ghost Canyon, but I do have one from USGS, US Geological Survey, from the Whitewater Baldi Complex Fire down, uh, Nahila in the southwest. It has a, you've seen it in my written testimony, a picture of a road that's eroded on one side with the debris flow of rocks and boulders coming down. And this is a fairly common, um, phenomenon that you'll have in areas that have terrain after a fire. Now, the thing about forests, and this has been, this is known to drinking water administrators and scientists all over the world, is they typically produce the most stable and highest quality of water for use. And, and all over the world, and indeed in New Mexico, you'll see, uh, drainages, rivers and creeks that come out of mountain areas dammed up for water supply because of this. Now, the high severity fires where most trees are killed can result in either the forest permanently being changed to a different type of forest or to a non-forest ecosystem. And there's a picture that I pulled out of the Bureau of Geology report that shows the Dalton Canyon Fire. And twenty years later, after the fire, it's still a, a scrub oak ecosystem. Now, historically, before climate change, we would expect that the scrub oak would return to the burn area in the New Mexico Mountains, then aspens, and then a conifer forest. But it's uncertain now if the forest is going to recover the way it did historically in the, in the, in the fire type of climate we have. And it just remains to be seen. Research is also needed on how this conversion of forests to different forest types or to non-forest ecosystems is going to affect water quality. So there's a lot we don't know of, about. There's also interactions, you know, the drought and the climate change can lead to um, attacks by bark beetles, and, and these are all interrelated with fire risk as well. So I, I had quoted extensively from the Bureau of Geology report. With regard to the exceptional recreational significance, I, I think that the, the recreational economy of the village of Pecos is clear evidence of the exceptional nature of the, of the exceptional value of the recreational opportunities in the Upper Pecos watershed. You've heard from a lot of witnesses about these opportunities, and I can, I can provide examples of my own multi-generational, um, enjoyment of this. I have a picture of myself in, in the, in my written testimony at Cave Creek in nineteen seventy-nine. That's not in the designated, um, watershed, it's in the wilderness, but typically, we would camp in Ponchuela Campground, which is in the Upper Pecos watershed, and use that as a home base for day hikes. And then I, in a, I have a picture of myself with, with my two kids at Cave Creek years later in two thousand and five. And, you know, this Pecos, in the Upper, Upper Pecos watershed, and these camping trips and hiking and backpacking, you know, you have these moments as you go through life where you have this realization, but golly, this is, this is about as good as life gets. You know, when I, when I was hiking with my kids and backpacking and, and taking them to all the cool places that I liked. And I think this adds to the exceptional significance of the recreational opportunities in the watershed. I also made reference to the New Mexico State Constitution, the provision that the voters put in, approved in nineteen seventy-one, where it states, "The protection of the state's beautiful and healthful environment is hereby declared to be of fundamental importance to the public interest, health, safety, and general welfare." Now, I'm not a lawyer, I'm not providing legal testimony. This, this was a sentence that was approved by the voters. But I really can't think of a better example of New Mexico's beautiful and healthful environment than the Upper Pecos watershed and the remarkable decades-long history of, of collaborative efforts by federal, state, tribal, county, municipal, citizen, and industry to protect this watershed. And I, I had a, I have a list of those activities in my written testimony. And it is pretty remarkable, the history of efforts to protect this, this incredibly valuable, high-quality resource. So in closing, I, I, I think it's, there was ample testimony, and I think the, the petitioners have done a great job in documenting that the designation would be beneficial to the state of New Mexico. It's really needed to protect the high quality and exceptional significance of these waters, particularly in light of the, the very real threats to water quality degradation. And I believe that the petitioners have complied, as the Environment Department found, with the designation requirements of the twenty point six, point four, point nine Administrative Code. So I strongly recommend that the commission adopt the regulations proposed by the petitioners. Thank you very much.
Are there any public, uh, excuse me, are there any parties that wish to cross-examine Mr. McQuillan?
None from petitioners, Mr. Hearing Officer. Thank you very much for your testimony, Mr. McQuillan.
Sorry, no questions from the department either, uh, and thanks from the department as well, Mr. McQuillan.
Are there any commissioners that would like to cross-examine Mr. McQuillan? Mr. Commissioner Dominguez?
Yes, thank you, Mr. Hearing Officer. Um, Mr. McQuillan, thank you for your testimony this afternoon. I just have a, kind of a, a quick follow-up question. You had kind of talked to the fact that there's a number of homes up through that area, uh, the proposed area. From what I can see, some of them are, are prime location just right on the edge of the Pecos. But you alluded to that, um, there's a number of septic systems within the proposed area. And on, based on your experience in that area with the department, is there any understanding in regard as to whether all of those septic systems are permitted within that area?
Mr. Hearing Officer, Commissioner Dominguez, that's a really good question. It's one that I worked with the Upper Pecos Watershed Association on in the early two thousands. We, we had a, a cesspool amnesty program back then, where people could, could notify the state of an illegal cesspool. They've been outlawed for decades and come to us and fix it without getting penalized. I don't, you know, we, we had a response, but I don't know, I think there's probably still some illegal systems out there. I, without going door-to-door and, and looking at, um, I know when I lived in Pecos on Eastern Cone, which was not in the watershed, there was an unpermitted system there, and they were waiting to get hooked up to the Pecos sewer system. So I think there is most likely some unpermitted systems up there. And, but this, the Pecos River was not a stream segment that had been suspected of being impacted by groundwater contaminated by septics that flowed into a stream. When I, my report, didn't send my references that I presented to the Water Resources Research Institute inventoryed known contamination at the time. And the Pecos River was not part of that inventory for surface water impacts. And indeed, we, we didn't have any evidence of groundwater well water contamination, but I don't think we, uh, we didn't do a water fair up there where we test private domestic wells. And there could be some more work done on looking at potential impacts. Having said that, I know the hydraulic gradients, the groundwater are generally pretty steep, and there's a large influx of high-quality water from the snowmelt coming in there to flush things out.
Okay, thank you, Mr. McQuillan, uh, Mr. Hearing Officer, that's all I have.
Commissioner Thompson?
Thank you, Mr. Hearing Officer. And Mr. McQuillan, thank you for your testimony. You brought up a number of issues that we haven't heard before, and I appreciate that very much. One of the, 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 the things that, uh, concerns me is we've heard testimony that designation as an ONRW does not necessarily preclude future, uh, changes in land use, um, such as someone who would like to, uh, uh, develop a, a residence on a property he owned. Um, my question is, what type of institutional constraints might there be that would protect the water quality? So for example, let's talk about, uh, onsite wastewater collection and treatment systems. Does the Environment Department have regulatory authority over, over such systems? Or would that be the county or the village or other, other, um, agencies?
Mr. Hearing Officer, Commissioner Thompson, I will, you know, I no longer speak for the Environment Department, but I am very confident in providing this answer. And if, if the Environment Department would like to, uh, jump in on this, they're welcome to do so. But I was the liquid waste program manager for nearly a decade, and that's an excellent question. The, the liquid waste systems are subject to the authority in the Upper Pecos watershed of the Environment Department. So if there's any new system going in for a new development, or if anybody replaces an existing system, for whatever reason, they have to get a permit from the New Mexico Environment Department. And there are a number of protections that the, that the regulations have. There's the baseline standards that the liquid waste systems program has. The department also has the authority to impose more stringent requirements on liquid waste system permits for areas that have hydrogeologic vulnerability, such as a really shallow groundwater, you know, or, or fractured rock or things like that. And this is something that the department has done, uh, and it's, and it's based on a site-by-site determination. So there are lot size requirements, there are setback requirements between the septic and the well. I'm, I'm preaching to the choir, Dr. Thompson, I know, and clearance requirements. And so those are the protections. And, and if it's a larger system, then it would be governed under a permit issued by the Groundwater Quality Bureau. And if it discharges the surface water, obviously, the Surface Water Bureau would have jurisdiction.
Thank you, thank you, I appreciate it. I guess my concern is that state regulations are sort of a, a minimum, they establish a minimum level of performance. And in an ONRW watershed, but let me just ask your opinion, your professional opinion, because you have so much experience with this. In it, are, are, are the state criteria, in your opinion, do you think they are sufficiently protective um, of the, of the high quality of the water associated with the Pecos and its tributaries, as, as currently written? Or would more stringent criteria, uh, be appropriate?
Mr. Hearing Officer, Commissioner Thompson, that's another excellent question. I, I wrote some papers on this, and if the, if the minimum lot size requirement is met, which is a very important parameter, depth to groundwater clearance, if all those are met and you're not in a fractured bedrock situation or a karst, K-A-R-S-T situation where you have like cavernous limestone, our, our monitoring of private domestic wells in areas with septic systems suggests that the baseline is appropriate. So if it's, if it's a septic tank out, up in, uh, Dalton Canyon that's, that meets all those requirements, you're gonna have fractured rock. And, and the, now there is shallow groundwater up there. Um, I would expect that the, that it would be protected. But if you have too many of them, and, and some of those lots are very tiny. You know, Commissioner Dominguez asked about those private holdings up there. They're, my understanding is they're on leases. And, and some of them, I believe, have been required to put in holding tanks that don't discharge to the soil or to the groundwater because they're seasonal. don't discharge to the soil or to the groundwater, because their seasonal climates, and they can't meet even the minimum requirements, much less more stringent requirements. So I think that the liquid waste program would impose more stringent requirements on these systems on a permit-by-permit basis when they need to do so. One of the last things I did before I retired is I taught a class for department staff on hydrogeologic vulnerability.
Thank you, that's a very complete answer, and I appreciate it, thank you.
Yes, sir.
Commissioner Velazquez?
Thank you, and Mr. McQuillan, thank you for your testimony. Given your experience and background, personal and professional, with the canyon, I'd like to get your perspective on the following. I believe, and I think there's a larger, broader belief, that we're in a bit of a crisis in the canyon in dealing with the byproduct of use, both residential, commercial, and outdoor recreation, and dealing with that byproduct, both with liquid and solid waste in and around this designated area, the proposed designated areas, and throughout that recreational portion of the canyon. Can you provide more perspective on this designation and how this will help drive NGOs, nonprofits, state, federal, and local communities to better serve the needs of the canyon by creating this foundation with this ONRW designation?
Mr. Hearing Officer, Commissioner Velazquez, I'm really glad you asked that question, because the Upper Pecos Watershed Association is one group that I pointed to throughout my career as a grassroots advocacy organization that actually makes a difference in the watershed. You know, as you're probably aware, they got EPA grant money to do channel reconstruction and create better habitats for trout and repair some of the damage caused by mining. Having said that, I think there are still issues that the U.S. Forest Service and the New Mexico State Parks Division are dealing with. The increasing use, I know when I was up there a couple weeks ago hiking, you know, they have vault toilets that don't discharge to the ground, they're self-contained, and they're pumped out periodically. So I think that the managing agencies are aware of the overuse and the increasing burden of waste, and, you know, and people littering, and human waste, and all that, and taking, that they will eventually take all the appropriate steps that are necessary. They got hammered, and the campgrounds and areas got hammered in 2020 because of COVID. But if you look at, like, if you go to Mount Rainier, and you look at what they have done up there for a really precious area that's been loved to death by hikers and backpackers, they have more stringent requirements, and the further away you get into the wilderness, away from the visitor's center, the less stringent it is. So I personally have confidence in the Forest Service and the State Parks people, the expertise they have, to do the right thing, but it's clearly, the overuse is clearly an issue that needs to be watched and addressed. I hope that answer was responsive.
Thank you.
Are there any other commissioners with cross-examination questions for this witness? Mr. McQuillan, would you like to excuse yourself?
Are there members of the public that would like to cross-examine me, Mr. Hearing Officer?
Thank you for doing my job for me. Are there any, are there any members of the public? Mr. McQuillan, thank you.
Permission to be excused.
Excellent.
Thank you.
As far as I understand, today's hearing, the evidentiary record is now closed, except we should check in to see whether there are any other public commenters out there.
Mr. Hearing Officer, I have two names.
Wonderful.
The first is Garrett Veneklason. And Garrett, if you could turn your camera on, please?
Can you hear me? Spell your name, please.
First name is Garrett, G-A-R-R-E-T-T, last name is Veneklason, V as in Victor, E-N-E-K-L-A-S-E-N.
And do you represent anyone?
I do, I work with, work for New Mexico.
I'm sorry, I didn't catch that, New Mexico what?
Can I go ahead?
Not yet, sir. Who do you represent?
New Mexico Wild.
New Mexico Wild, thank you, you're going to be sworn in now.
Right.
If you would raise your right hand, you solemnly swear or affirm, the testimony you will give will be the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth.
I do.
Thank you.
Please proceed.
Good afternoon, Mr. Chairman and members of the Commission, Garrett Veneklason from New Mexico Wild. I grew up in Santa Fe, born and raised in Santa Fe, some of my best childhood memories were hunting and fishing and hiking and picking wild mushrooms up in the Pecos, and it really is a big part of my identity as a person. I want to reiterate the vast amount of support that we have seen for this designation. We have over 1,600 people that have engaged on this, three resolutions, 28 letters, separate letters from myriad elected officials from our congressional delegates, all the way down to county commissioners, mayor of Pecos. I have seen one opposition, last-minute opposition. Again, this is something that I think the vast majority of New Mexicans, and certainly the absolute majority of people that live within the area, really want to see this designation happen. Again, this is an heirloom for New Mexico and the United States that is unique and special from its cultural assets, its wildlife assets, and especially from a water security asset. There is nothing more important to New Mexico and New Mexicans than to have water security, and the Pecos is one of our biggest, most vibrant watersheds. At last, I want to kind of address this land status issue. If you look at a land status map of the inholdings above Dalton Canyon, the number of private inholdings is a fairly small amount of acreage, I think we need to acknowledge that. I also want to especially highlight the fact that there is not a single landowner within this designation who has opposed this designation. And I also want to highlight the fact that the Aseca Commission, Aseca Parciantes, are really in support of this, and that is the lifeblood and center of the agricultural community within that greater designation. I think that we need to honor their wishes, and this really, again, is the identity of New Mexico, the Pecos, you know, the Pecos Pueblo and the Hispano communities, they really want this, and I think we need to honor their needs and their wishes on this thing. I think it's a no-brainer. This is going to hurt anyone, it doesn't threaten anyone, and it really ensures the cultural and ecological viability of this massive area. So commissioners, I urge you to support this. We all love this place, and we really want to see this designation happen. So thank you for your time and consideration.
Thank you, Pam?
Yes, Liliana Castillo, if you could turn your camera on, please?
Would you spell your name, please, after you unmute yourself?
Yes, hi, thank you, it's Liliana Castillo, that's L-I-L-I-A-N-A-Castillo, C-A-S-T-I-L-L-O.
Is that again?
Would you raise your right hand, please, Ms. Castillo? You solemnly swear or affirm, the testimony you will give will be the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth.
I do.
Please proceed.
Great, well, thank you so much for the opportunity to give public comments. I am joining my fellow community members, local governments, farmers, ranchers, and water conservation groups, and urging the New Mexico Water Quality Control Commission to protect 14 miles of the Pecos River and 162 miles of tributaries within the Pecos River watershed as outstanding national resource waters under the clean water. This designation will protect traditional community water uses and safeguard waterways from degradation, development, and transportation, waste disposal, recreational overuse, and impacts of climate change, which is why there is such broad and wide-ranging support in the Pecos community for outstanding water protection. One of the things that I've always found really inspiring about this effort is that it's truly community-led, as you can tell by who the petitioners are, and the people who've been giving you amazing testimony today, many of them are actually based in Pecos, which is amazing to me. They are so passionate about protecting this place, and I just want to support everything that they've been doing. We know that communities surrounding the Upper Pecos watershed depend on clean water to support agriculture, recreation, and the local economy. But we also know that protecting the Pecos as outstanding is not just good for farming and our health and our well-being and for climate change, also good for our bottom line as a state. According to the U.S. Department of Commerce's Bureau of Analysis, outdoor recreation contributes $2.4 billion to New Mexico's economy every year. And this is, you know, additionally, the Bureau ranked the Land of Enchantment as second among all states in compensation growth, showing that there's a bright future for outdoor recreation wages and livelihoods. But that depends on New Mexico standing up and being a leader to protect these special places that make New Mexico, New Mexico. So I urge you to vote yes, thank you.
Ms. Castillo, would you say that number again, billion dollars?
$2.4 billion.
Thank you.
Thank you. Pam?
No one else, sir.
Thank you. Okay, now, the way I see it, and under the rules, the parties have rested, and there's no more public comment, so the evidentiary record is closed. And now we should move on to a discussion of how we're going to handle the post-hearing procedure. Madam Chair?
Thank you, Mr. Chakalian. So I understand it, and I will definitely seek Council Sanchez's help on this, but because the hearing notices didn't explicitly state that a decision could be made during today's proceedings, I think the best course of action is to follow up with a hearing officer report that can then be deliberated at the following regular WQCC meeting. So that was my original proposal, and it's certainly open for discussion.
Chair Stringer, this is Council Sanchez. I would wholeheartedly concur with how you suggest this be done, and then we can set some timelines. We have a 60-day limit under, if the Commission will bear with me, under 20.1.6.303(c), the Commission has 60 days to reach its decision from either the close of the record or the date of the hearing officer's report. So we don't get into the sort of time crunch that we did with the triennial review. Perhaps the hearing officer's report could be due 15 days following today, and then an additional 15 days for the council for the parties, or the party pro se, Mr. McQuillan, to submit any closing arguments, any proposed statements of reason, and we could then set a date for deliberation by the Commission.
Okay, I'm not sure if you meant what you said, Council Sanchez, if there was an error there, but I couldn't have a hearing officer's report ready in 15 days.
I'm just trying to be sensitive to the 60-day limit, and so we don't end up having to prepare the final statement of reasons and decisions at the nth hour before the expiration of the 60 days following deliberation by the Commission.
Okay, so the way I read the rule, the 60 days doesn't start until my final report is filed, so I'm not sure how the 60 days, I'm not sure where the idea of 15 days comes into play, but I wouldn't be comfortable committing myself to anything like that. I believe that what we need to do at this point is to get a transcript, first of all, and then the parties have the opportunity to submit their post-hearing submissions to me, that I can then prepare a hearing officer report, and after I file it, a final version, and we haven't talked about whether the parties would have a comment period or not at this point, but once I file the final report, then the 60 days, I think, would begin. So that's the way I read the rule, Council Sanchez, am I getting something wrong?
No, Hearing Officer Chikadon, I looked at the rule as you were speaking, and the 60 days would in fact begin to run following either the close of the record, or in this case, your filing of what you're characterizing, I think, as your final hearing officer's report.
Chair Stringer?
I see that we have a couple hands off, shall we go to those comments before we proceed, just to feed into the discussion, Commissioner Dominguez?
I think you might be muted.
Thank you, most people prefer it that way. I would agree with what the Hearing Officer just brought up regarding the 60 days, I believe that's what we've always operated under. The second point I wanted to bring up was currently under the amended scheduling order, there's already some timelines set out within the scheduling order. That would be under item number eight within the amended scheduling order. So does that, the fact that we already have a scheduling order, are we bound by that scheduling order? That's more of a question, so I just wanted to bring it to everyone's attention.
And I see that Ms. Fox also has a comment to make as well. Ms. Fox, please proceed.
Thank you, Chair Stringer and everybody else. Just to, I know, Commissioner Dominguez, you had asked me this, but I'm going to try to answer your questions as best I can, and then leave it to Council, who's in a better position than I to answer, but this is the Hearing Officer's amended scheduling order, so he can change it. And so we're not bound by that schedule. One thing that we discussed at a pre-hearing conference, after we realized that the notice didn't have provision for Commission deliberations after hearing, was trying to abbreviate the post-hearing schedule to the extent possible. From petitioner's perspective, we would certainly like a decision sooner rather than later. And so, you know, anything that is agreeable to the Hearing Officer and the Commission in terms of abbreviating that post-hearing schedule, petitioners would support, so that could include, that could include maybe decreasing the timelines for post-hearing submittals by the parties, which is contemplated, that could include not having a Hearing Officer's report, since there's no opposition. Hearing Officer's reports aren't always required in these kinds of proceedings, I think, especially if there's no opposition. Certainly, petitioners would be amenable to proposing a statement of reasons for review by Council and the Commission. Those are some ideas if the Commission and the Hearing Officer would want to in any way abbreviate the post-hearing proceedings, which are, you know, they're a little bit lengthy and cumbersome right now. Thank you.
Chair Stringer, if I may, please?
Please, Council.
I would agree with Ms. Fox that the authority of the Hearing Officer is delegated by the Commission, and I think the Commission can certainly, in consultation with the Hearing Officer and the parties, abbreviate or change those... abbreviate or change those timelines. And also, I would remind the Commission that there is of record, I understood Mrs. Tiffany Rivera, who represented the New Mexico Livestock Board, to have filed written comments in opposition to the petitioner's proposal. So I think of record, there is in fact opposition. Thank you.
Go ahead, Ms. Fox. Sorry, I'm not sure if the Hearing Officer is supposed to call on people, or if I am at this point, since we're still in the hearing, but please proceed, Ms. Fox. You're muted. I can't hear you, Ms. Fox. I think you're muted.
Okay, I got it right now. What I meant by no opposition was that there's no opposition from a formal party, not that there's no opposition from any of the 1,600 persons who have participated in this proceeding providing comment or public comment. It is true that we know of at least one opponent of those 1,600 people, but there's no, significantly, there's no opposition from a party.
Thank you, Ms. Fox. So I think it sounds like we want to get this done and resolved as quickly as possible. We need to wait for the transcripts to be provided, and then perhaps that's the point at which we adjust the schedule through another conference with the Hearing Officer and get a final date for submission of the sequence of events leading up to the final Hearing Officer's report. Is that correct?
The way, I think the Commission has some options here, and those options can be exercised not just today, but in the near future as well. It seems to me that, yes, we should wait for a transcript. So Ms. Adagin, how long do you think it'll take for a one-day transcript?
I can get it in a week.
That's marvelous. Thank you. Once that comes in, Pam will file a notice of transcript, and I think the Commission can easily decide whether or not it wants to expedite this either through the omission of a Hearing Officer report or with a Hearing Officer report. If the Commission wants a Hearing Officer report, then I need to receive from the parties their post-hearing submissions. Now, we did discuss in the pre-hearing conferences that we had that it is contemplated that there will be a joint post-hearing submission, because everyone's on the same side, all the parties are on the same side of this. And I agree with Ms. Fox that if you don't have any opposition, then drafting a Hearing Officer report would be a lot easier. Let's just say that. It'd be a lot easier than when you have conflicting statements of reason, the way I did in the triennial. So once I see the post-hearing submissions, I could report back to Chair Stringer on how quickly I could get a Hearing Officer report out. I mean, I do have other work that's going on right now, and I'm not going to lower the standards of my work. So if the Commission decides that they don't need a report, that's a different story, but I'm happy to do my job, and I can do it as quickly as I can effectively do it. But that's how I see it, Chair Stringer.
Thank you. Commissioner Dominguez, did you have a comment?
Yeah, to try to help move things forward. Looking at the two avenues of no Hearing Officer's report or a somewhat expedited report. So let me drop back a little bit here regarding the most recent Hearing Officer's report, which was covering the triennial review. That was an extremely extensive hearing with a lot of moving parts, and the Hearing Officer did a great job of encapsulating everything because of the complexity of that one. Including, you know, providing proposed statement of reasons within each section that the Commission to work off of. As a suggestion, I don't think this needs to be nearly to that level. This is, I see it as very much more simplistic. Partially, just suggestion-wise, if there is a Hearing Officer's report, it can easily cover the procedural matters of how the entire process was conducted and likely forego giving us the advantage of proposed statement of reasons, and the Commission would lean on the petitioning party and the Environment Department of what they submit as statements of reasons, findings of fact, conclusions of law, et cetera. And not to take away from the Hearing Officer's workload, but I think we could simplify the process a little bit, kind of look in that direction, and it would speed up things and maybe help out with the big picture. But that's just some suggestions there.
Commissioner Brankard?
I guess I sort of agree with Commissioner Dominguez. I think this is not a very complicated rulemaking procedure. Here, there's not a lot of contested facts or a law. And so either we go with a Hearing Officer's report and nothing from the parties, or I say we take proposed statements of reasons from the parties, and we don't need anything from the Hearing Officer. Because our Council will prepare a statement of reasons afterwards anyway, so why double it up? Guess that would be my thought. And really, I think with the 60-day deadline, maybe what you need to do in some ways is to sort of figure out when we're going to deliberate and then go backwards.
Yeah, I think that was the biggest lesson learned from the triennial, was controlling that timeline a little bit more. Thank you, Commissioner Brankard. Any further discussion from the commissioners on options? Okay. Seeing none, I guess I've been working under the assumption that a Hearing Officer's report would be presented from the record in the scheduling order. And I think it is a nice way to summarize it, and it kind of is a clear demarcation of setting the timeframe. So I'm leaning towards if we could have that Hearing Officer's report developed, and like Commissioner Brankard suggests, we sort of map that timeline out based on when we think we would deliberate, given your availability of when you can devote time to it, Mr. Chakalian. And so that leads to the next question, which is when, given the different steps that it's going to take, the week to get the transcript, when do you think we would have that final Hearing Officer report roughly, and then we can adjust the timeline based on the regular meeting schedule?
Well, the rule calls for a period of time for the parties to file their post-hearing submissions, and that would begin when the notice of transcript is filed. I think if the parties are going to file a joint statement of reasons, you know, based on the citations to the record, then I have literally one document to deal with as opposed to multiple documents. So that would speed things up right there. I don't know how long it would take for the parties to collaborate on a joint post-hearing submissions. That may add a little time, since it's not just the product of one mind, but more than one. But once I received that, I could get it out, I could get the report out, oh, I don't know, maybe two to three weeks after I receive the joint post-hearing submission. So I think that would speed things up for the Commission.
Thank you. Madam, the parties, if they have a rough estimate on how long they think it would take to produce a joint statement of reasons?
Madam Chair, if I may, I know we're contemplating a joint statement of reasons. At least in the time that I've been with the department, we have not submitted joint statements of reasons in these types of rulemakings before. And I need to consult with my client a little bit further, but I don't, I think we should proceed under the assumption that at least petitioners and the Environment Department will most likely submit separate proposed statements of reasons. However, I think the testimony that's been submitted and heard today indicates that we are unlikely to find any conflict between those two documents.
Ms. Fox?
Thank you, Madam Chair. We can file our proposed statement of reasons, findings of fact, conclusions of law, within 30 days after filing of the transcript. We have no objection to filing a joint statement of reasons, whatever the Environment Department wants to do is fine with us in that regard. We would take the laboring, or if they do want to file jointly, but I can understand why they might want to file separately.
I would like to bring up one more thing, Chair Stringer, and that is, in the past, there's been a comment period after the Hearing Officer's report is done. Maybe we can forego the comment period, since I'll be compiling, you know, information that doesn't conflict with other information.
Ms. Fox, are you responding to that?
Yes, I am, Madam Chair. Petitioners have no objection to that. One thing that I saw done recently in a proceeding is rather than having a time period for filing exceptions, the Hearing Officer said, if there is anything that is incorrect versus something that you just disagree with, you know, the parties have an opportunity to, you know, file corrections. So petitioners could certainly forego with filing exceptions, you know, unless there's some, you know, misstatement of fact or correction that the parties would like to make. You know, this is not as complicated as the triennial, but it's still easy to get stuff wrong.
Yes, that triennial one was rough. A lot of work to do in a very, very short timeframe for Council Sanchez and myself. Okay, I wanted to just check with the third party, Mr. McQuillan. He was on camera. Mr. McQuillan, did you have any input into this?
Thank you, Madam Chair. I have no need to make any post-hearing submission. And if the petitioners would entertain the possibility of me co-signing their statement of reasons, that would be good, too.
We could certainly discuss that. I don't think it would be a problem. We'll discuss that. I have to check with clients, et cetera.
Sure.
And then Council Sanchez, you had your hand up, but to get down?
Yes, Madam Chair. My question was whether Mr. McQuillan intended to file any post-hearing submissions. He's answered that. Thank you.
Okay. All right, so given this timeframe, a week to get the transcript, and 30 days to for the parties to file their statement of reasons, conclusions of fact, et cetera. And then from that point, how long did you say, Mr. Chakalian? It's pretty simple after that. Did you say two weeks, or did you give a timeframe for that? I'm just trying to calculate. It looks like it's going to be July most likely before we can deliberate, given the sequence of events for us to have the final report and then go into deliberation. It looks like the realistic timeframe is going to be the July regular meeting.
I had suggested it would take two to three weeks for me to produce my report.
One week. Yeah, that's putting it right around the timeframe for the June regular meeting. So I think if we operate with that schedule in mind, we can plan to deliberate at the July regular meeting, and we'll have the final Hearing Officer's report in hand to do that. Does that make sense to everyone? Any objections or discussion on that timeframe? And then I don't know if you have to memorialize this in a revised order. What's the term? Not order. Scheduling order. We have to do an amended one?
I don't believe I do. The scheduling order contemplated a 30-day period for post-hearing submissions after the filing of the notice of transcript. It gave me 45 days, because I wasn't sure what I'd be looking at. That was agreed to by the parties. But in this case, I would be shortening my own timeframe. So I think that's under my discretion. I don't hear the Commission ordering me to shorten my timeframe. I'm volunteering to get it out within two or three weeks, and your 60-day period doesn't begin until I file my report.
So it sounds like we've got a rough schedule, and we can forego the public comment not the public comment, or the comment on the party's comment. Unless we identify something that's just incorrect in the final report, and then we'll deliberate at the July meeting. Okay, I think we're good then. And now do I turn it back over to the Hearing Officer to close the hearing?
I believe that I've closed the hearing. The evidentiary record has been closed after the last public commenter. So if there are no other matters, then this hearing is adjourned. Thank you.
Thank you. And let me pull up the agenda again. I seem to have closed it. Okay. So that concludes our agenda, item number eight. And we're moving on to the next meeting and expected upcoming matters for the May Water Quality Control Commission meeting, or any future meetings for that matter. Does anyone have any items to bring to our attention?
Madam Chair, given what we put in our open meetings resolution, I wonder, given that we don't know what's going to happen with the Governor's emergency declaration, whether we need to make it clear that our next few meetings will be virtual?
Probably doesn't hurt to be clear about that. And so it is my understanding that the next, we're just sort of working under that assumption, but to memorialize that, certainly the May- certainly the May meeting will be virtual. Pam, do you have any additional comment on that?
I don't. I'll be happy to set it up as a virtual meeting, Chair Stringer.
Okay, thank you.
And I think we have a hearing in June, do we?
I believe June is the next ONRW is tentatively scheduled in June. Is that correct, Pam?
That is correct. WQCC 21-62.
And also a question, is there anything scheduled in May at this point?
Let me look. Standby.
While Pam is looking, I know we've got an item to discuss, potentially discuss the interest rates for the Clean Water State Revolving Fund. And so we received a memo from the department regarding the interest rates, and I, I would like to request that the department present on that to the commission at one of our upcoming meetings. I don't want to have a meeting just on that in May, but just sort of throwing that in the mix of what we're looking at in our future plans.
Chair Stringer, we don't, that, I did add that item to the May agenda, but that, at this point, is the only item.
Okay. And as far as I understand it, that's not time-sensitive. We could cover that in June with no negative ramifications.
Okay.
Madam Chair, one additional question, not to put you on the spot, but for planning purposes, I believe we tentatively had a placeholder in July for the Cannon hearing, assuming that negotiations fall through or whatnot. Can you shed any light on that?
I do not know if the settlement discussions are proceeding in a productive manner. That would prevent us from having that hearing in July, and so my assumption is that hearing will occur.
That's what I needed to know. I will keep several days blocked out.
Thank you. So it sounds like at this point, there's a potential for the May meeting to be canceled, because we have no items unless something is provided to Pam.
That's correct.
Okay. All right. Any further matters for upcoming meetings to be discussed? Nope. Seeing none, I adjourn this meeting of the Water Quality Control Commission. Thank you all for your participation.